10 o'clock, Your Worship.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Reconvene this meeting on Friday, January the 28th at 10:00 a.m. And the first order of business is...
Yes, thank you, Worship. Our first item this morning is the presentation of the Parking Master Plan by IBI Consultants. And they're going to be introducing the Parking Master Plan final. Thank you.
Are we on board here? It's Tilla and Janice. Good morning.
Yes, hi. Good morning. Thank you very much for having us here. Can you please confirm when my screen share can be seen?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, just wanted to start off with a quick thank you again for having us here for the second council meeting of the Parking Master Plan. It's just, I know we're limited on time, so I'll just jump straight into the presentation. What we have here, what we have here for you today is a quick, quick summary of the, of the study and how we've arrived at the second council meeting. And then we'll provide prior in overview of the study recommendations. With a focus on how these recommendations have been updated since the first council meeting. To reflect the feedback that we heard at that council meeting along with some further comments from the village. So the recommendations have been divided into three different categories. The new category is quick wins, which can be adopted over the next year for immediate impact. And then there's also a short-term recommendations, which are one to four-year horizon and then long-term are five-plus years. And then we'll open the floor to any questions or comments that you may have. Going into the study overview, we started the project off in August with the kickoff, with the kickoff meeting. And throughout September, we went to the public with the intent of collecting feedback about known, known study or non-parking issues and desire study outcomes. We started, we continued on with the analysis and then using the feedback that we hear, heard, we came up with some preliminary conclusions and recommendations. At that point, we went back to the public a second time with the preliminary findings for further thoughts, which were then adjusted. And then at that point, we came to council and then based on the feedback that we heard from you, we've, we finalized the study recommendations. We created the final report and we're here now today to discuss the finalized recommendations. Starting off with the quick recommendations, ones that can be adopted over the next year. There are the recommendations that I have for you on the screen over here have, have not changed since the first, first meeting. We're still recommending an implementation of 45 short-term parking spaces, and by short-term, I mean in high turnover, 15-minute parking spaces. We're recommending an update to the online parking system app to improve wayfinding, specifically to identify special use parking spaces. So by that, I mean accessible electric vehicle, motorcycle and any other type of curbside parking. We're recommending that one of the accessible loading spaces be relocated to, to be adjacent to Rendell Park. That's one of the requests that came out of the Public Information Center. The one, one of the ones along Lilluette, we noticed was, was very underutilized, so identified that one as the optimal one to relocate. When it comes to electric vehicles, in the, over the next year, we recommend increasing the user cost to these art parking spaces to offset the cost of electricity. This can be done with the current technology that, or the current charging stations that are in place today. Moving on to the next slide, there's been some adjustments to these findings, specifically the boat launch recommendations. We have determined that the parking prices have already been harmonized with the general parking system, which, which is something we recommend maintaining. So as, as the parking prices are increased for the, the waterfront parking system, we recommend adjust their increasing the boat launch lot prices accordingly. This is to prevent providing a financial incentive, incentive for illegal or unintended users of the boat launch lot, since we know those spaces are already limited. Based on feedback that we heard during the first council meeting, we're also recommending the consideration for a maximum parking restriction of 24 or 48 hours to increase the turnover. And another new recommendation is to develop a public-facing brochure, which would be outlining the upcoming parking system changes and easy-to-consume manner. And the last one is an update to the parking supply recommendation is to investigate shared parking agreements with private waterfront developments. We understand this is already underway and it's off to a promising start, which is good to hear. Moving on to the short-term recommendations, so on the one to four-year recommendations. The recommendations that you see on screen have, have not been updated since the previous meetings. We're still recommending in the implementation, implementation of parking restrictions near the waterfront. So this will be in the residential areas and the intent is to prevent unintended users from, or not unintended, but waterfront parking users from, from parking in the residential area. Since this was one of the key objectives of the study. To allow the local residents to continue parking as they do even with the parking restrictions. We're recommending a residential parking permit program and this will grant them exceptions to the above noted restrictions. Additional by law enforcement officer will be required to, to ensure that the parking restrictions are, are in. So they're sure compliance with the above noted restrictions and residential permits. And then we're also identified a few streets for one-sided parking restrictions. Moving on to the next slide, we're recommending that pay parking operations be implemented along Lilluette Avenue. And there's an update over here. The, the recommendation hasn't changed, but we understand that Lilluette is a ministry road. And there is precedence for pay parking operations along ministry-owned roads. But typically what occurs in these cases is that the ownership would be transferred to the local municipality. So in this case, Harrison Hot Springs. No changes were made to the, the other two recommendations I'm displaying on screen, so EV parking. We're still recommending that Harrison Hot Springs plan to, to meet, plan to install 35 additional charging stations over the next few years. And this is in line with the 10% sales targets of electrical vehicles in, in BC by 2025. We're recommending a special events plan, since we understand that the annual peak parking demand in Harrison Hot Springs occurs during special events that are hosted during summer weekends. So we're recommending temporary increased parking prices during the special event itself. We're recommending improvements to BC Transit Route 11 to, so to increase the frequency and to consider also, also consider shuttle bus services from surrounding centers not on this route. And we're also reckoning that there is a promotion for event organizers to enter shared parking agreements with private property owners. And I'd like to note that this is not limited to Harrison Hot Springs private, private developments. It could occur, it could be, the agreements could be made with the surrounding, in the surrounding communities. So the idea would be to have the event attendees park in their local municipality and then continue to the event through a shuttle bus. Moving on to the next slide, there's no changes to recommend these recommendations. We're still recommending the same transportation demand management measure, measures, as well as updates to the zoning bylaw requirements to better reflect the demand being generated by developments. The idea behind this update is we understand that the existing developments are generating more parking demand than the parking supply being provided on-site. And this is largely due to the success in, in promoting Harrison Hot Springs as a destination. Those existing land uses are generating more demand now than they were a few years ago. So we're recommending an update to the zoning bylaws to better reflect that demand. Moving on to the long-term recommendations, so the ones for the five-plus year. And there, there haven't been any changes to these recommendations. We're still recommending the pay parking expansion to include cedar and maple in the long-term, as well as expanding the electric vehicle. Park charging stations to be in line with the 2030 target, BC target, which is 30%. And that's, that's an additional 70 chargers. I want to do note that these are targets and while they provide a good planning, planning target, we recommend that Harrison Hot Springs continue to monitor electric vehicle parking demand. And if the observed demand is higher or lower than, than the targets, the, the number of, of charging stations implemented could be, could be adjusted based on the demand observed. In the long-term for the waterfront parking supply, we're recommending that Harrison Hot Springs explore opportunities to include public parking opportunities in, in new developments. And the idea here is to increase the public, so public parking supply in a manner that's integrated with the urban fabric. So I just want to note that these parking spaces would be in addition to the parking requirements by, so the zoning bylaw parking requirements for, for the developments. And as a final, if, final strategy, if the shared parking agreements and the part new parking opportunities in, in the new developments are, are not sufficient to meet the, the demand. Then a new standalone parking facility can be considered to accommodate the, any additional demand. So moving on, these, these recommendations again have not been, been updated since the, the previous council meeting. We're still recommending that the, a new parking facility that's constructed include boat launch parking on the ground floor. And this is because trailers typically have a more difficult time navigating to the higher floors. So the, the lower, the, the ground floor is an ideal location. With the increased boat launch sites, so through shared parking and any new parking facilities, the existing on-street spaces along Espinac could be converted to general parking. Boat launch users are typically long-term parking users, which are ID, or by long-term, I mean daily or multiple days. These are ideally met off-street and this will allow the on-street parking spaces, which are considered premium, they're as more adjacent to the, the destinations. To serve the, the short-term parking users, which means they're serving more users for, with higher turnover. And then as I noted before, we're recommending that Harrison Hot Springs continue monitoring the parking supply and demand, including the electrical vehicles, as well as other special use parking spaces. Just to ensure that the projections that were, were made as part of the study are, are accurate. And if not, they can be an adjustment to the, the number of spaces. That's everything that I have here today. At this point, I would like to open the floor up to any questions or comments that any of the attendees may have.
Thank you for the, for the presentation, Tilla, and for the report. I think for the purpose of this morning, we'll, if you go back to the slides on the, the one year. What could possibly be done in the short term, I think we should concentrate on that. The other areas from one to five years, of course, will, that's further down the road and that might be dealt with other, other. Other councils as they come on board. So I think for this morning, at the moment, we'll concentrate on the one year. And there's one, two, three, four, and we'll go around. The counselors to see if they have any questions to put to you regarding the, the first four on there. And we will start off with Councilor Piper.
The consultant. I'm not a fan of parking permits, so we'll start there. What type of research or evaluation was taken into the? Into that right? In my experience and speaking to other people in small communities that have residential parking permits, it's a bit of a nightmare. Not only for the residents, but also on the administrative side. What kind of examples can you provide to me that's going to change my mind on that?
That's, that's a good question. And just to confirm, you're asking about the, the parking restrictions and parking permits as, as part of the, the one to four-year recommendations? Yeah, so the, the very, the hardest, largest, I guess not the largest, the, well, the two most common feedback that we heard during the Public Information Center. Was that the boat launch parking operations are not operating at, are operating over capacity. And then there's also the request for residential permits. That was one of the number one items that was requested by the, the public. So we, we looked at different municipalities that, that have residential parking permits. And there's, there's quite a few. I can't name any off, off the top of my head. We have to go, go into the, the report itself. But if we are to implement parking restrictions preventing overflow parking demand from the waterfront, from spilling into the residential areas, which is, is one of the key objectives of the study. We don't want to prevent the local residents from continuing parking as they do today. And so the, the only way that we, we determine that that's feasible to, to meet both of the objectives is to grant the residential residents an exemption to any restrictions that are being adopted. And that would be through the, the parking permit system.
Okay, thank you. And I acknowledge I jumped ahead because that's a little bone of contention to me. So I'll back up and focus on the quick wins. For the accessible parking. You're, in your opinion. Were providing ample stalls currently?
Correct. Based on the parking supply and the data that we collected, the, the peak accessible parking usage was a little over 50%. So that, that was the max that we, we observed.
What techniques have you, I'll, this is my last one, if we can only speak to the quick wins. What techniques have you seen in addition to, I'm talking, sorry, about public education? What techniques have you seen to be successful when trying to communicate out parking changes? As we know, parking is a contentious issue in every single community. So how do you penetrate that level of temperature, I'll say, in the public for changes other than a brochure?
Right. And that's, yeah, that's, that's a great question. And one of the, the findings of the, the engagement process that we found was that there, Harrison Hot Springs. The practices that, that they're currently doing is actually quite effective in reaching the, the local community. We had over 100 survey responses out of the, the village population, which is close to 10%. That's, that's unheard of in the, the other studies that I've been completing. So that's, that's very high. We also have quite a few attendees for the Public Information Center, which was, which is always good to see. So the, the recommend, this recommendation is intended to use the existing channels that, that you're already using. And then to create a brochure that's in the easily, or publicly, easily to understand for public consumption. And the report itself has a few links in, in the respective section to, to examples that can be used. There, some of those are parking related, but other ones just provide a proof of concept. But we, we think that does a very good job in, in, in essentially communicating these, these recommendations in easy-to-understand manner.
Thank you.
You have more questions, Counselor? Carry on. I'm allowing certain time to, on the quick ones.
Yeah, if that, that's all mine with the quick one. Apologize for jumping ahead.
No worries. No, we're coming back anyway. So going back to the beginning, Adler. The first? Yeah, there we go. Okay. Counselor Palmer.
Counselor, please use your microphone.
Now you can hear me? Thank you. The 15-minute parking spots, I'm trying to figure out how that would work in the summertime when it's busy. So we'd have the five, four to five spots and then they could, and they would be free. So then we'd have the problem, I gather, of those spots being policed to make, otherwise the 15 minutes is going to be irrelevant. I'm just wondering if that could be done by our current parking contract who deal with the paid spots, because these aren't going to be paid spots. Or whether it's going to put significant onus on our bylaws people to basically be standing beside those five spots. Otherwise, I don't know that this is going to be enforceable. How, have you thought further about how enforcement's going to work?
Yes, that's, that's a great question. That is a topic that we discussed during the closeout meeting with village staff. And the, the intent here is to start off free, well, hoping that the, the, these spaces will not be abused. Because they, they could very well be abused since they are free compared to the, the pay parking spaces. So if Harrison Hot Springs is noting that these spaces are being abused, people are staying longer than, than they're intended or it's being used by, by the users that are, are not just picking up. For example, a, a takeout from a local restaurant or, or any other short or quite high turnover use. Then, then these, these spaces could be pivoted to, to, to pay parking spaces. And then if, depending on how the, the agreement works with the, because I understand it's, it's ParkLink that provides the pay parking services in Harrison Hot Springs. So if, if there's limitations on the, on the time limit, so if 15 minutes is too short, then it could be increased to 30 minutes. Or, or whatever the, the shortest denomination is while implementing pay parking. So indeed, the long answer or the short answer is it would, it would have to depend on how they're being used, potentially implement pay parking.
I'm, I'm good with long answers. The, the cost you have associated beside it, I'm trying to think that the, to me, if I think that through, the cost is the signage. But if we then took four or five spots that are presently revenue generating spots and made them free 15-minute spots. And the cost of this recommendation is also going to be lost revenue for five spots over the entire pay parking season. Isn't that a much greater cost than the $3,000 to $5,000 for signs?
That's, that's another great question. It's another topic that we discussed during that closeout meeting. So I know the answer off the top of my head. We found during the financial assessment of the study that each parking space was generating a revenue of, on average, about $200 or how, how much was it? A few, few hundred dollars a, a year. So I think the, the answer to this one was that the loss in revenue would only be about several thousand dollars a year. And this would, would by far be offset by the implementation of pay parking operations along Lilluette Avenue. So we can definitely note it in the report that there's this additional lost revenue. But in, in the grand scheme of things, there would be an, an increase in revenue flow if, if the recommendations were all implemented.
Okay. Yes. And then changing the electric vehicle charge. And then I know that, I, I mean, I'm hoping that we also discuss the four to five, one to five and, because it's a master plan. So I think all of those trainframes need to be discussed, but I, I wanted to look at the electric vehicles. I, I'm kind of mixed on this. I have a plug-in hybrid and I have in fact used, plugged it on the street. Well, not often, but occasionally. But I also recognize it's free hydro. So the recommendation to increase the EV chargers is of course a wonderful idea. But of course, it's going to all be paid for by Harrison taxpayers on the electricity. So increasing the user cost for the parking spots with EV chargers to offset the cost of electricity, I think is a good recommendation. But I don't know that it works because we're not charging parking spots 12 months of the year. We have no enforcement 12 months of the year. We're enforcing whatever, four months of the year. So the challenge I see is when we increase our electric vehicle spots. We're now providing spots to residents that don't want to pay for the electricity for their car for eight months of the year. And so even increasing the parking cost for those few months, those months we're charging, isn't not going to provide us with recovery on the electric. I mean, I, I really do want to see more electric cars. I know they're going to happen. I will never buy a car again that's not fully electric. But I also see that creates a bit of an unfairness to have residents pay for the electricity. So it's, I just, I see that as, as a challenge. I mean, I think one of the answers is that we should, when we do the official community plan, that we may be set out that anybody building. Units has to make sure that there's electric chargers for 50% of the units or something that's going to reflect the, the, the long-term. So that people who buy these units won't be looking to charge on the streets. But I.
Yes, that's. All, all very good points. And I have a few, few responses to that. Hope that I remember. Just starting with the, the very latest one, you mentioned about the developments requiring that EV charging stations be placed in developments. Harrison Hot Springs currently does require that, although I believe it's only one EV charging space if additional or if more than 20 spaces are required by the zoning bylaw. So that could definitely be updated to reflect more modern best practices, which is, is to implement. I think, I think it's, it's, I can't remember exactly off the top of my head, but it's a, it's a, it's a, it's an increasing number of charging stations as a function of overall parking spaces. And at the same time, the development or the parking facility would need to be constructed in a way where, that allows for an easy expansion of EV charging stations in, in the future. But by that, I mean the, the background infrastructure would already be there. It would only be a matter of fact, a matter, would only be as, as simple as installing a, the charging station in a place that could already support it. Recognizing that EV, electric vehicles are going to be quickly increasing in the new, new, near future with the sales targets. And when it comes to the, the short-term, the quick win recommendation for electric vehicles, we, we recognize it's, it's not a perfect solution. It's only a stopgap over the next year or so. And then the, the intent behind it is the, the existing charging spaces in Harrison Hot Springs cannot transfer the cost of electricity to the users. And this is a best practice that we found through, throughout our research. So with, eventually the, the existing charging stations are recommended to be replaced with, with newer models that could transfer the cost to, to the user. And then at that point, the, the chart, the parking spaces or the parking fees that are paid by the users, the regular parking fees would, would be a level throughout the entire system. So there'd be no difference between the electrical vehicles spaces and the regular, there would just be the added cost of, of paying for electricity through the charging station itself. I hope that answers your question.
I could just intervene for a minute, Counselor. In regards to your comments on the, the free charging, the village will be looking, moving to the future to the pay. Use the pay charging machines. Which a lot of municipalities will be bringing in as well. So that might help you with your thoughts on, on what that electric vehicle charging. That will be eventually a use of pay.
And the, the intent behind that is, is the, the village is not subsidizing, subsidizing the, the gas prices at fueling stations. So, so why would we, why are, is electricity free if, if gas isn't? It's just to create inequality?
Yes. And then, and as much as I'm totally in favor of electric cars, and I, I really, like I said, I'll never buy one that's not. I recognize there's already the unfairness that when I charge my car with electricity, there's no taxes to this, to the, you know, there's no road taxes. So I'm not contributing to the road construction or the road maintenance. But when I go and buy a tank of gas, I'm paying all sorts of taxes for those sorts of things. So there's already all sorts of inequities which have encouraged electric vehicles. So I just, just think that they don't need the extra free gas or free electricity from the village. The. I think, I, I'm still with the accessible parking as well. So we're looking at relocating, but, but not increasing. Since we're looking at electric vehicles as, you know, the long-term trajectory, wouldn't one also think that the need for disability spots? In a retirement community, that probably the long-term trajectory would be an increased, increased need for disability spots?
I, I see the, I see the point. And that could be captured through the, the recommendation for ongoing supply and demand data collection. So every, every three years, the idea is to, to observe the number of spaces that are occupied and, and being broken down into different types of parking or parking spaces. So that would include accessible spaces, whether it's electric or motorcycle. And today, we saw that the peak demand was only a little over half of the spaces being used. So there's no immediate need for additional spaces. But as over time, if you're seeing that those accessible spaces are becoming more and more utilized. And you're reaching a point where the spaces are, are not sufficient to meet the demand, definitely 100% to, would be to increase the, the accessible parking supply to continue meeting the accessible parking needs.
I think those are my questions now. I have other questions, but I think I'm good with this and I certainly I'm interested in going to the next stage as well, you know, more than a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vidal?
Thank you, Your Worship, and. I thank you to our consultant for a very thorough report. Under, under the quick win, win, so 15-minute parking. I do think that four to five spots is a bit excessive. And as Counselor Palmer pointed out quite accurately, I think. That during our busy tourist season. Our parking ambassadors are extremely busy. And I think we would see difficulty in policing. That fifteen minute parking spaces. It would, I think, almost require one parking ambassador. Just just to monitor those, which I don't think is practical. I do agree with parking wayfinding. And I think to have it available at our tourism center. And other businesses, I think any time that we can. Increase or include more educational components is always worthwhile. Accessibility parking, I I'm just curious as to. Why the recommendation was made to move from Lilwet Avenue to Spruce Street? If you could elaborate on on that one, please.
Yes, yes, of course. And I apologize for not going into too much detail with each of these recommendations. I can certainly provide it. I know we were limited with time, but anyways, to to answer your question. One of the the common requests that we received during the public engagement process was to have an additional accessible parking space. Adjacent to Rendall Park. And so that was requested by a few different different sources. And so we the initial idea to look at was just to convert one of the existing general spaces to accessible. But we noted that the accessible spaces were, as I mentioned before, were only about half utilized as as a max, as a as a peak. So instead of adding a new space when when there is when this existing sufficient supply was already sufficient. Where we looked into where we could relocate one of the existing spaces from to the to Rendall Park. And we settled on Lilwet Avenue. This is the one, I believe, that's the furthest furthest east. And the reason why we selected this one was over the course of our parking supply and demand surveys, we we did not observe this this accessible space to be. Used used at all. So it's it's the the one experiencing the lowest demand is the one that we we identified as the optimal one to relocate.
All right, thank you. To the EV stations and accessible parking. I don't know currently if any of our accessible parking spaces. Have EV charging stations. Do you know that? I I I'm and the reason I ask is. I do think that that possibly should be something to consider. In the future. Are you aware of any of accessible parking have EV charging stations?
I I don't believe there's an overlap today, but that's that's certainly a best practice is to to overlap some of the spaces. Because some it it makes sense that that over over time, some of the the accessible accessible. Users would have electric vehicles. So it definitely makes sense to to provide an overlap.
Great. Thank you. Back to the EV. I'm not aware of. Price. Do you have any idea or know what the cost is to charge? An electric vehicle using one of our. Charging stations?
It, yes, it it does vary a little bit, but in as as a rule of thumb, it's for a level two charger. And that's why that's charger that would fully charge a vehicle in in a in a few hours. There's there's level three, which takes about half an hour. But for a level two, those are the most common. The hourly rate would be would be would be a dollar or two.
Okay, so it's it's not a substantial cost. Okay.
Nothing excessive, no.
Okay. I. It's been my experience that I I I do think that it's mostly our visitors. Who use the EV charging stations. Down on Esplanade. So I do agree that. And as Mayor Fazio said, we are moving towards. User pay. Now, in in your lengthy report, you indicated that there. Would be another alternative and perhaps looking further in the future. But replacing the existing charging stations with. More users using an app rather than increasing the direct cost for the parking stall. Am I correct that, you know, you looked at that as as a possible alternative in in the report? Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to clarify that those recommendations would go hand in hand, so they'd be complimentary instead of mutually exclusive. So the the idea would be to to provide users with different different options to pay for parking. Their their rates would be the same across the the different systems. But say you you want to park and you you don't have change on you, so you want. Pay with a with a credit card, that there's the option to pay with credit cards. Or if if you have a if you have the app downloaded and you can quickly pay with. With with for parking through the the app itself, that that's the most you might find that is the most user user friendly. So it it really depends on the user and the idea is to provide users with multiple different avenues of of paying for parking. But the the rates would be the same.
All right. Thank you. Nothing further on this slide. Your worship Allah, further comments when we move on to the the next slide. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hooper.
Good morning, all. Just a question to your worship. Going for it like this on these quick on these slides doesn't allow me to answer to to ask. Some forty nine questions, recommendations or observations that I've got. So would there be an open session at the end of this?
Excuse me, the reason I did this first is what we could possibly manage this this year. And then the rest, depending on time, I mean, my day is free. From the rest of council, we can go through the rest, but I want to get through this quick ones first because there's. There's areas that we could possibly take care of this year. And then after we've gone through this session of the the quick win ones. Then I will ask councillor, they wish you continue, and then we will get on to the next the next section.
Thank you. Well, on these. Quick win recommendations. First of all, can I just reiterate that you carried out a visual. Survey of this on two days only last year. And a lot of your work has been done on Google Earth. Which it states here. Now, going on Google Earth, I know that the. It's not been updated for over two years and on Google Street View, it's ten years. So a lot of your. Information. On the parking areas that is out of date. Now, on the accessible parking. We're saying we're going to move the accessible parking from Lilwet to Spruce. Just for more convenience for the disabled. Are we looking at moving any of the disabled bays that are placed by stairs? Are we going to relocate them to make it easier? The electric vehicles, charging stations, all over Europe now. They're having charging stations that attach to lamp columns. And it's paid. The fifteen minute implementation parking I am not concerned with at all. And the and the parking wayfinder thing, they're actually. Which has been tried in a number of municipalities in London. And it first the. Ends up in the garbage can. So on that slide, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I make some comments today, would you just like to verify the the comments that the councillor just made in regards to. Not the correct information, please?
Yes, of course. And I I want to note that we did do, as you noted, we did two days of parking supply and demand. So at that point, we verified the exact number of parking spaces in in Harrison Hot Springs, both on street and off street and the different types. So that all that is up to date. We also did another site visit later on to discuss the with a focus on the the boat launch parking operations. And at that time, we did a complete drive through the entire village. Every every single street with with a video recording, so we could reference up to date information instead of 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 Google Earth. So that was done during the the late summer, early fall of of last year. So it's certainly not not ten ten years out of date. It's it's we're definitely used information that was 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 up to date. At that same time, we had ongoing communication with village staff, we were able to provide local insights. As as well as the the public information center that we held. The insights that the public gave into existing issues and desire study outcomes, those were all up up to date as as well. There was solutions that they wanted to see based on today's operations.
Thank you. I'll make some comments now, if I may. Regarding the fifteen minute parking, what I don't think that's going to be a. I mean, that could be reduced to three anyway. We only need one on block one, two and three. After that, we don't have any any restaurants or anything. But I think that would be a a problem to control. It'd probably be abused. And me personally, I haven't had any pressure or comments from. Restaurant tours or gift shops in regards to having a a a. Fifteen minute space to pick up your food or to buy something. So I'm not too concerned on that one. Wait, the parking wayfinder, that's that's proved to be very useful in Harrison. We have one at the that the Chamber of Commerce put up on the corner of. Hot Springs Road and Espinard, which is great for all the businesses. We have also put one up at the end by St Alice as well and plus all the other signage. So it is useful to to people, especially visitors. You you will notice that many visitors do look at our signs and and do. It is helpful for some or they get the information from the from the information center. The accessible parking from Lilwet Avenue to the east side of Spruce Street. Well, we already have two accessible parking spots right next to the entrance to the boat launch. So if there was going to be two added, I think they should be added on Maple Street. That's the center of Espinard, more or less, and that would be more useful for the for the relocation for the. For those who need to park in those places. I've already discussed the EV chargers, so that's something that we do have. I know residents from Echo Beach that use the that use the. The chargers outside near Muddy Waters. I know there's a business on from Hot Springs Road and Espinard that uses the charger. And of course, the two outside the Memorial Hall is also used by our locals as well. But like like councillor Vidal says, the majority are used by by the visitors. So for that, I I'm. My only concern there really is the spaces on Lilwet to be transferred to Maple Street. There we would have four disability places. And that's the center of the of the Espinard, I think it'd be more useful there. And the Spruce Street. I think if we get into further discussions this morning, I think there's going to be discussion on what you already suggested about Spruce Street. And boat parking. So I'll leave that one. And now I will go to the next slide. Sorry, councillor Hooper?
Yeah, excuse me, but I hadn't finished. I mean, I need to know what size parking bays have you related all your parking areas to? Is it the standard six point five? And will, because they're in residential areas, so will they be sitedized? Would you set them back four feet or a meter from each driveway?
Where are we here on this one?
Well, it it's.
On this topic?
Well, I'll save that question till later on.
Yes, that's coming up, yeah.
Right, yeah. Maybe go to the next slide then.
Councillor Hooper?
Excuse me, I'm I'm a bit confused because we've all everyone's already done this slide, haven't they? Right, yeah. Well, on the boat launch, have we considered reconfiguring the parking in the boat launch for trailers only? Having the cars drop the trailers off and then parking on the road outside. This would actually increase the parking for trailers there by at least fifty percent. And it would also save time with drivers driving around the village, looking for spaces. They haven't got to go anywhere. They can just pick their vehicles up and go. Now, at the moment, you're saying be strict parking place for a maximum of twenty four to forty eight hours. Which will have an adverse effect on all those that have got cabins up the lake. We already have a number of. Trailers parking in the car park area for on their own. So. We need to look at reconfiguring the boat launch, looking at other options outside the box. And that. Public education. I'm afraid the the public will have as much education as they want, so again, I've got nothing on that. Waterfront waterfront parking supply. Parking shared agreement with developments. The developments we've got are almost full and the ones we've got on the books at the moment. Will have we've we've increased their parking. They're not going to want to. Share theirs. The hotels in the summer, their car parks are full to overflowing. So I can't see any agreements with private waterfront developments for this. Thank you.
Councillor, councillor Vidal?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to to our consultant, is there a discrepancy in parking prices between? Like on the boat launch compared to other parking stalls along Espinade?
To understanding that's that's been updated so that this the parking prices are now harmonized.
All right, thank you.
Discrepancy.
Thank you. Considering restricting boat launch parking to a maximum of twenty four or forty eight hours. During your observation. Were you able to determine that that is quite substantial? Or or what is the turnover, the average turnover for boat parks? Or, or what is the turnover, the average turnover for, uh, boat parking? Or trailer, boat trailer parking? Thank you.
So I, I can't answer that question with exact numbers. Collecting turnover data was not part of, uh, the, the study's scope. Uh, this, this recommendation actually came from council meeting number one, where there was the, the request to consider the, the maximum parking restrictions to, to increase turnover. So if, um, if, and then that's why we, we worded as consider instead of restrict. So it's, it would be up to the, the villages, uh, this discretion, whether or not there's the, the appetite for this. Because there, it was noted yet that yes, there are some, some users who, who park for, for the weekend or longer and then go to, go to cabins. Uh, the, the question is whether or not we want the, or you'd want the the boat launch lot to, to meet that type of parking demand or, or not.
Thank you. I, I, my concern is that if we were to put a restriction twenty-four to forty-eight hours, those, um, people that do own recreational property, uh, on the lake often will, you know, spend a week or ten days at the cabin. So restricting to twenty-four or forty-eight hours, I think has the potential to see, uh, boat or trailers parked on residential areas. So, um, I would be in a favour not putting a restriction on it, but offering the option for, uh, people who want to, um, park longer than the twenty-four to forty-eight hours to, uh, have a increased charge for that. Um. Under waterfront parking, go ahead.
Yes, sorry. I just wanted to say that, that, that's certainly an option to, to continue meeting that type of demand while at the same time providing a financial disincentive for parking longer than, than forty-eight hours by, by increasing the, the parking prices, the longer so on parks. That it's definitely an option.
Thank you. Um. The waterfront parking supply, investigate shared parking agreements with private waterfront developments. Um. Our hotels and other accommodation are, are usually tuck full, their parking lots, as councillor Hooper, um, alluded to. But I do think there are, or could possibly be other opportunities, um, with private residents. And also some areas along Lilwet. Uh, I'm speaking specifically of the church that's there that is, um, not well used. Um, their parking area is not well used during, during the weekdays. So I, I do think that that is worthwhile, um, investigating. Uh, thank you for, for bringing up all that recommendation for that point. Um, I have nothing further right now, your worship. Thank you.
Councillor, councillor Palmer?
Yeah, the, the, thank you. The last two which have disappeared on me. Oh, the public education. No problem. The waterfront parking, public education, I, I don't see, that's fine. Uh, both those recommendations, uh, they're worth moving forward on and we'll see how they affect. The boat launch is such a good topic because, um, it is, uh, I, I don't know what the answer is, and I don't know that this is the answer, but it certainly is one of the questions that we need to, to look at, particularly as more and more development ends up going across in the boat launch. One of the questions that I have, and this is just, uh, details that I don't understand. So, uh, you mentioned that the boat launch parking cost is the same as our on-street parking cost. Is that what I understand?
Correct.
So what I don't understand is, so if I have a, uh, street parking, uh, I have space for a vehicle, does that mean that we charge the same for a spot on a vehicle as a boat launch charges for effectively two vehicles, which would be the vehicle and the trailer, which takes up a double spaces? Is that the equivalency? Or do they pay more because they're taking up so much more space?
I, I believe they pay the, the same amount regardless of the amount of space being, being used.
Okay. So I, I just wanted to ask that because it's not really an equivalency. I wonder what happens if I have a boat launch and, a boat and I park it on the streets of Harrison and I take two spots. I'm talking about, uh, along with the side streets. I guess you wouldn't know. I'm, I'm assuming since I take two spots, I have to pay for two spots. I'm not clear. Anyway, um, I, and I do see the twenty-four or forty-eight hours causing problems with people who, who live up the, have cabins up the lake. That, that's a challenge. I, I, although I assume that if I had a cabin up the lake, I wouldn't be using that boat launch and I'd have made arrangements to have my boat at one of the launches, uh, and have my boat moored, uh, on one of the, uh, marinas on, uh, on Rockwell. I, I assume that's what most people would do, but I don't know. And I also do see the point councillor Vidal raised, that if you limit it to twenty-four or forty-eight hours, then a lot of people are going to just be parking on the street. So that, that could be dissolved by other issues, but it just moves the problem from one place to another. So then I'm thinking, and I, and I'm not trying to get too detail oriented here, but I'm thinking about what councillor Hooper said about forcing people to disengage their trailer from their transport vehicle, truck. And I'm thinking, that doesn't seem practical if I'm just going up for four or five hours. It's going to take me a fair amount of time to disengage my trailer and get it all parked. But at the same time, if I were going to stay there for a day or longer, maybe that would make perfect sense. Because I do see his point that it would facilitate more trailers being parked. So maybe, maybe the boat launch, which isn't really under direct, our direct control right now, maybe that could be dealt with in a way where, uh, more than one day stays, they, they do do that. I've, uh, because it, it is, um, that's an area that jams up in the summer. And, uh, it's, uh, I, I view that as, as, as a challenge. And those boats that are there, the vast majority of them are not coming and using our restaurants and, uh, patronising the businesses on Espinard. They're going for the day of boating or up to their cabins, and which are all good activities. But, uh, they're not, you know, they're, they're, they're not necessarily, they're taking up space that could otherwise be used by, um, people who are patronising our businesses. And it's a balancing act. I'm not trying to, they're all welcome, but I, I'm, I'm concerned about how we could, that seems to me to be the single biggest issue for the pay parking and for Espinard. And I, and I don't know what the solution is, but I don't think that's a solution either. That's, I, it's one of those problems that I know what I don't like, but I have no idea what the solution is. But I, I, I don't think that solution is, is adequate. Uh, unless we increase them way above, uh, normal rates so that people are then inclined to look at the economics of going and joining one of the marinas or paying. Uh, that, that might be, that might be the solution. Anyway, um, thank you.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Piper?
Your worship, um, through you to staff, can I have confirmation that there is on-street parking, um, restrictions within our highway and traffic bylaw as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Deborah?
Yes, that is correct.
So in saying that, there's restrictions too. So transferring the issue that currently exists over at the boat launch on to public street, I'll say, um, there are restrictions attached to that, uh, as well. Um, I'm also would like to, uh, ask staff if available, what types of call for service do we have through our bylaw um, in regards to, um, parking complaints? And does it change throughout the year?
Deborah?
Are you talking about traffic in general, parking in general?
Uh, parking on, um, public streets complaints? Do you have that or is it?
Complaints, complaints come in, um, frequently, um, for, for parking on streets. I, I don't have exact numbers in front of me.
Thank you. That's all, your worship.
Thank you, councillor. Hold on. Oh, can I? Can I?
Just a quick point. I, I need to clarify.
Sure, carry on.
Staff, uh, sorry, Deborah, uh, um, on the use of like the church and private residents to store trailers and boats, haven't we got a bylaw against that? They're not allowed to charge? I seem to recall that somewhere. We can't, you, you can't use your parking lot as, or your, your driveway as a parking lot for other people.
I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but are you asking are, are private residences permitted to park and store vehicles on their property? Correct. Under the zoning bylaw, residential properties are allowed for parking spots um, for various, uh, vehicles, one of which may be a, a recreational vehicle and/or a boat trailer, but the maximum is four vehicles per lot.
Yeah, sorry. But they're not allowed to rent that area out, are they?
Are you talking about onto the street?
Uh, no. On their own driveway, are they allowed to actually rent that space out for vehicles that are using the boat launch, trailers and cars and that? I seem to remember that we got a, a bylaw that says residents can't actually use that area for, uh, commercial use. Now, that also brings into account, uh, run tax implications and the rest of it, which you're earning. So it needs to be clarified, but I'm sure I've seen the bylaw on that. Thank you.
I may be a misunderstanding of the question, but, um.
Think what the councillor's saying, Deborah, is this, this, I came across this when I first came here to watch the Canucks games at their old, um, their old stadium, that people would rent their driveways out while you were watching the game, twenty, ten bucks or twenty bucks, whatever the case may be. Um, so he's asking, he thinks he's seen that somewhere in a bylaw that's, that is not allowed. I haven't seen it myself, but.
Yeah, I've never had a complaint of that nature. Um, what, uh, we don't regulate the type of vehicles people have on their property, only what they can have on their property. We have no way of knowing whether that vehicle's registered to them or not. And we, so that's not something that I've ever come across.
Well, this is another time, councillor, get some information.
Just one last bit. And our bylaw states no more than four vehicle, uh, four, four vehicle X with axles on the private dwelling.
Correct. Uh, under the zoning bylaw, four vehicles, one of which may be a, a recreation vehicle and a boat, boat and trailer. And there is a restriction on the, um, maximum weight of a vehicle. I don't have that in front of me here, sorry.
In, in regards to like, uh, comments from councillor Vidal about the, um, the, the church, that, 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 that would be allowed, like, we have a private lot already being used on, on, um, on Espinard at the moment. Um, regarding the boat launch, I think councillor Hooper brought up some good concerns. It's always been a topic of discussion that, I mean, in Kelowna they do, which is a very expensive part of, of, of equipment. They, they have the stackable electronic stackers you stack, you stack all your, your trailers. And it gives you lots of space for everything else. But that's, uh, that's quite an expensive way to deal with things. I mean, there's about fifty, fifty spots in the, in the boat, uh, boat launch parking lot there. But to, but if you left the trailers there, but half, uh, and, and if you had the double trailers put in there and move the cars out, fifty cars are still going to find a spot to park. So I'm not sure whether that's, that really balances itself out. But it's a topic of discussion. I think the, the maximum time, it could be dealt in some way with, with the, with the attendance that the people who have cabins could, could, um, ahead of time say that I'm going to be away for a week, whatever the case may be. And they could park their vehicle on the centre parking of Espinard, which has the, the length for both the car and for the trailer. So that could be arranged as a temporary measure to try and deal, uh, with that situation. Um, the, the section of parking between the crosswalk where the sign is, get your parking pass at the boat launch and the boat launch entrance, uh, that used to, that's for cars only. And I think, I'm not sure what has changed. Deborah can correct me if she does know. But it used to be five bucks for a permit for that to park your car. But I don't see, I don't see people who bring their truck and trailer or car and trailer with their boats that anybody else comes in a vehicle. They all seem to come together or meet there, uh, that, why that area could not be transferred over to our, um, pay parking for the village, which is not. It's only the west side of that that's under pay parking. The east side is under the boat launch contract. So something that, that could be looked at. Um, the water park with, with developments, while I do know that the, the, uh, one of the major hotels in the village does, does have people that come there and they're charged for parking if they can get a spot. If they have the room, but they, they, they don't want them there, but they, they get there and then they have to, um, try and find them if they can, and then they're charged. But it's not something that I think that any hotel would want to have an agreement. It's too much of a hassle. It's, it would mean more work for our staff and everything else. I think that, that one we can put aside. The only other solution could be what happened back in two oh nine or two ten, I forget now, was the, uh, a T U P, a temporary use permit that an owner of a piece of land could take out with the village and the village could use that land for, as it was done on the end lot on Spruce there a few years ago. And that was levelled and they used that for the overflow parking of the tray, uh, cars and trailers. So that's a possibility, but the cost of the levelling, cleaning and levelling of the land was down to the village. And then there was a shared cost with the owner of the land of the, the cost of the, uh, the fee, the parking fee. So, but that's, that's, there's, there's another alternative, um, that could be looked at. Uh, public education, what else? We, we, that can continue. And the, um, yeah, that's it for me on that. Uh, oh, the, the, is, yeah, I've done that. Thank you. Okay, slide please. Okay. So we've done the short term ones. The tiller, short term, there's the next one. Okay.
Yes, we've, we've discussed the, the.
We have. Okay, okay. So that's, that's good. Now, now we'll move to the one to four years. And in reverse order again. So we'll start with, uh, councillor Piper.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I went off track earlier, so I won't get back on my bandwagon about parking permits. Um, I do have concerns about, um, the cost to, uh, the hiring of a enforcement officer. Um, because we all know compliance is going to be, uh, the issue. And how do you deem, um, compliance is, you, you need enforcement. When there's no threat of enforcement, people do whatever they like, unfortunately. And, I mean, you can view that every day, uh, along, uh, along the Coons, the big red and white stop signs, uh, little to no compliance. Um, so, uh, I, I have grave concerns, uh, about that for four months out of the, uh, two to four months, in my opinion, out of the year. So onto one-sided parking. I'm, I'm really hoping that safety is what is the main driver behind the restricted to one side. I'm a strong believer in, in, or safety first, access by emergency services. I have lived on one of these streets for several years and would be the side that did facilitate the majority of parking because, and maybe that's my background, I fully appreciated and understood that the first twelve feet from road edge was not my property. It's public property. Never in the seven, eight years that I lived on the street did I have disrespectful people utilizing that frontage as parking. Often, there was a knock at the door asking for permission. And I appreciate that's not everyone's experience, but I did not participate in the parking game that goes on with, with some to protect that, that frontage. And what I mean by that is moving my vehicles off my driveway and plunking them down there. I made the decision to live in that area close to the lake with the full understanding and anticipation that I would have vehicles parking on my street. So my one question is, were emergency services consulted during the investigation and research into this recommendation?
No, I don't believe emergency services were one of the stakeholders that were consulted.
Thank you. Um. My next one here is the, the pay parking expansion. I understand how Lilwet would help expand parking revenue, taking over responsibility of Lilwet, which in my opinion is in desperate need of rehab. I mean, the alligatoring and the dip noise that comes from that street, the improvements that we need at one particular crossing, but multiple crossings along there. I can't imagine us being able to take on the the costs associated with that for the little revenue gain that we may get. So I, I unfortunately am not in favor of gaining thirteen additional pay parking spots and, and transferring ownership from, from the ministry. I, I, I would need more clarification on exactly what those details mean. So I hope I'm not going down a rabbit hole there, but that road's in poor condition and it, it needs a collective approach for sure. I'm okay with the bicycle parking. I was part of bringing in many bicycle racks free to the village a number of years. So I think we're doing pretty good with bike parking and storage supply currently. And I'm, I'm a big proponent EV parking and, and storage and supply. I know B C I T did a lot of research into what councillor Hooper was mentioning, what happens in the UK to improve on-street parking opportunities for charging. So and staff may be aware of that, but there are other options than having, having the bank and, and the future will, will bring those options to us. So those are my, my gripes and my applause for short-term one to four.
Thank you, councillor. Sorry?
Just one point of clarification, if I may. When it comes to the Lilwet pay parking recommendation, it's, it's thirteen pay parking machines, but each machine would, would serve more than one parking space. So we're talking about a lot more than just thirteen spaces.
Yes, I misspoke. Thank you for that.
Councillor Palmer?
Thank you. Starting with Lilwet, I, certainly Lilwet is an interesting situation because it's a ministry highway. If they would narrow the ministry highway and give us the strips, I know that's been discussed as a possibility that they would simply, you know, the, the, the village could take over the outer strips. The highway is very, very wide. Or even if they would arrange for some sort of a lease arrangement with the, with the village for the, for the parking strips on the outside, there may be ways that we could do that, because I do see implementing parking, pay parking on Lilwet as a good thing. Although I think if we do that, if that were possible, then I think we, we'd have to make some arrangements. Quite often residents have said, and you see this quite often, where residents say they don't want to come down and pay the parking rates in the downtown, in the, on Espinade, and they're therefore not patronizing the village's businesses during parking season. I assume, anybody can say what they want, but I assume there's merit to that. Although I usually think, yes, but if they park on Lilwet, they're very close to the business. I think if we made parking on Lilwet, then we really have made it more difficult. So I think if we did parking on Lilwet, I think we'd have to at that time also look at some way where there would be some level of parking on Lilwet that would be potentially free to residents. I'm not sure of the mechanism, but I think that I wouldn't want to make it so that residents wouldn't easily be able to get close to the downtown, the downtown area, those, particularly those with disabilities. But right now, I've always felt that Lilwet is, is, is adequate. The going to the issue of, going back to the issue of parking, and it's not on the sheet I'm looking at now, but the issue of, of off-street parking being limited to three or four hours. I'm, I don't know. I, I, I live in a house, well, live part-time, in a house that is just off Lilwet, and I probably have more cars parking in front of my house than any other resident or very few other residents in the whole village. I have no problem with that. I mean, if that was the case when I bought the house, that's how it is. I do know that when I bought the house, it was rather unusual because it had a sign in front of the house that said, resident parking only. And strangely enough, for the first year, I couldn't understand, no one parked there. That sign was, was respected. And then it was a nice sign for me, and then I eventually realized that it had no legal authority and that the person that I bought from it put the sign up, and I took the sign down. And then, of course, people have been parking. But the reason I tell that story is just, I'm surprised by the level of compliance it was, but it was, it was respected. Since that time, I pretty much always have cars parked in front of our house in the summer, and it hasn't caused me any difficulty. Sometimes they park in front of my driveway and I, my cars are blocked. But I've found that, you know, so that could generate a bylaw request. But on the other hand, I've found that by the time I issue, try and track down bylaws, the car is going to be there for a while anyway. So usually we just make other arrangements. But so my experience has been that cars parking in front of my house isn't a big problem. So the three or four hour parking maximum, there's a lot of people who come at nine and then they're on the beach all day and they're parking there. So I don't know how, how reasonable the, the three to four hours, three to four hours is. The issue that I usually have, to be very honest, is when someone parks in front of my house for five days in a row. And that happens. Maybe they have a boat, or maybe they live in one of the apartments and they've decided not to pay for parking, or they have more cars than they're allowed to. That seems to be a challenge. So I certainly see implementing, say, an eight-hour parking maximum restriction would be, would be helpful. But three or four maybe seems, maybe seems a little tight. And I take it that the only reason there would be permits would be so that residents could park in front of their houses without having the three or four hour limit. And we wouldn't be saying that that permit is applicable in any of the pay parking areas. So I, I don't have a major problem with the permits, but I certainly don't want to spend thirty or forty thousand dollars in staff enforcing them. Because I think that there's a lot of compliance, that's why I told my story about the sign. There is a lot of compliance anyway that people will follow. If there's the occasional sign that says, you know, no more than eight hours or whatever, I think that most people will, will, will follow that. And if somebody parks in front of your house for three days, I probably, I'm quite sure our existing bylaw services can, can, can deal with that. So the extra cost does scare me. With the additional bylaw officer, particularly since we look at parking as a major part of our revenue. You know, in our finance yesterday, I think it shows as a net of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this year. So losing forty or fifty thousand dollars of that for extra bylaw of cost seemed to be a little counterproductive when we were so reliant on those funds. So, so yeah, I, I think those make sense to me, other than I think the parking restrictions for four hours are too narrow. I mean, my experience again is that most of the people that are parking in front of our house are actually there for the day, and that's why they're, that's why they're there. And, and not everybody can afford to pay our parking, and I fine with that. People should, we want to have the revenue on the parking, but if you don't have the money to pay and you're prepared to walk a couple of blocks, that seems reasonable, but I think the three or four hours is too tight. I think those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Vital.
Thank you, your worship. I want to comment on Lilwet.
Just to interrupt, Attila, if you, if you wanted to interject to any point for the councillors, please do so, okay?
Yes, thank you. Actually, I had a, had a point to make about the three, three to four hour recommendation. It really comes back about the, the desired objectives for, for parking in the residential streets. The, the objective of, of this, the study as, as prescribed by the request for proposal was that we want to prevent waterfronts or visitors from using the resident parking, the on-street parking along the residential streets. So the intent with this, these three to four hour restrictions is exactly what the councillor noted as, as being too, too tight. We, they are too tight for, for visitors, and that's exactly the point. We want to prevent those, those waterfront users from using the residential streets. That, that being said, if there's a desire, if, if the desire to allow those, those users to continue parking in the residential areas, then, then definitely it is that this recommendation could be revised. So it really comes back to what the, the desire is for, for residential parking. And so the, the three to four hours would prevent those users, but it would allow the, let's say if, you know, you live in that area and you have a visitor for a few hours, they would continue to be able to park on the streets. And if with the permits that were given to the local residents, they would be able to continue parking as, as well. So the, the intent is to prevent those waterfront users from, from parking on the street.
Thank you. Sorry, councillor Vital, carry on.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to address the recommendation on, on Lilwet. As been stated, Lilwet is a, is a provincial highway and would require substantial cost to the village, should we be able to enter into any sort of an agreement with Ministry of Highways. Although I will say I'm, I am open to at least exploring it once again with Ministry of Highways. With that said, it's not only Lilwet that, that concerns me, it's also where Lilwet turns into Rockwell. And as we all know, during the summer, there's substantial vehicles that do park on the village portion of Rockwell drive up to the Marina and use it for access into Randall Park. I also come from an emergency service background and I'm often horrified at people traveling down Rockwell, say, from Greenpoint for a day, and there's small children and cars and, you know, car doors opening up along Rockwell. So I would also, should we enter into any discussion with Ministry of Highways, I think it's important that, that issue also be, be brought up from, from a safety, from a safety issue. One question for our consultant is, and after your report, you, if five-year-plus plan was to look at paid parking along Maple and Cedar. And I'm wondering why you included that in a, you know, over a five-year plan. It seems to me that, that could also assist with installing a few more paid parking spells. Could you, could you speak to that, please?
Yes, certainly. The, the intent with staggering the, the increase in, or the pay parking expansion is, was, was due to, due to costing. So, but the paid parking machines, the technology itself is, is quite cost, quite heavy, heavy cost. So we wanted to stagger a little bit instead of including everything in the, the short term. If, if there is the funding in place, certainly you can go straight ahead and include pay parking along the, the others, the two streets that are in order in the long term right away as well. And that was just our reasoning behind staggering them a little bit. But Lilwet was the focus, so that's the one that we started with.
All right, they, thank you. I think maybe Maple and Cedar would be something that, you know, future councils could consider within the five-year rather than five years plus, but that, that's another issue. Thank you. Regarding resident parking permits, I, I'm not a fan of issuing parking permits. I, I, do you want to clarify through you, your worship, to staff? But the existing bylaw says that people are free or have the ability to park on residential streets. So the bylaw concern would be if a vehicle was blocking access to a driveway or something, something like that? Is that, is that correct? Like, that would be the only restriction or, or over a certain length of time? If there, I believe it's over forty-eight hours or something. Could you clarify? Thank you.
Yes, through you, your worship. The highway and traffic bylaw allows for vehicles to be parked on residential streets and not to exceed forty-eight hours. Now, having said that, it's different for commercial vehicles and recreational vehicles. So they can park on streets and are able to move that vehicle and come back and park there. So it's, you know, not, not in excess of forty-eight hours without movement. If, if a vehicle was blocking or impeding someone's access, i.e. in front of their driveway, that would, the only enforcement action would be if we've received a complaint about that and then that, we, we do have a provision to tow. But no, no other instances unless, of course, it's an immediate public safety issue as well. So I hope that answers the question.
Yes, thank you very much. I think limited three or four hour parking along the streets that are closest down to the beach area would require considerable personnel to, to enforce it. And a, a question to, to the consultant. Reading through your larger report, and correct me if I'm wrong, but from my perspective, it seemed to indicate that. from my perspective, it seemed to indicate that you didn't see, um, a huge amount of, uh, parking on residential streets, um, south of, say, um, Echo. I know Bear and Echo. Can, can you elaborate? I, I'm, or, I'm, I'm just questioning that, how you came up with, um, sort of like that observation. Thank you.
Yes, certainly. So that, that is in line with what we observed. Uh, we didn't see too many vehicles parked on, in the residential streets in general. There were a little bit more as you, as you got closer to the waterfront, as, as noted today. There does, uh, seem to be some people already parking in the residential areas and, and walking to waterfront for the day. But we, we didn't see too, too many. And so this, this was based on our, uh, parking supply and demand counts that we completed, uh, completed last, last summer. And, and I'll note that we were, we, we did the counts on a typical summer weekday and a typical summer weekend. So the demand that would be observed on, say, special event weekends would, it would certainly be higher than what's shown in the report. Uh, but we typically, as, as a best practice, don't, don't, uh, and assess or plan to meet the, the annual peak demand just because, uh, the, the facilities would, would stay empty or underutilized throughout, um, you know, two hundred and fifty-five days of the year. We typically aim for about, uh, the ninetieth percentile of annual demand.
Um, just to, I can, if I can finish your comment, I'm just curious as to whether we've lost your audio.
Yes, hi, I'm still here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that comment. Um, um. I, uh, don't live close to the waterfront. In fact, I live probably on the farthest outskirts of, of the village. And I live closer to our welcoming sign on Hot Springs Road. And, um, I am constantly getting people parking in, in front of my home and walking down to, the welcoming sign so they can get a picture with our famed harem. And most people are very respectful. In fact, as Council Piper said, I have had people come up, knock on my door and ask, you know, can we park in front of your house for, um, you know, twenty minutes while we take our children down to get a, a picture of, of Harry. So, um, I would not support a recommendation for a three or four-hour parking maximum on our residential streets, um, as Councilor Piper indicated. Um, the closer you live down to the waterfront, then, um, probably the more likelihood during our four-month tour season where you will get people parking, um, in front of your house. And I think that, uh, everyone wants to live down close to the beach, but, um, our village is changing. And, um, I think people who purchase closest down to the beach for, one of the reasons for easy access down to the beach area, need to be aware, um, that we are a tourist town. Um, and, um, take that into, into consideration, uh, when they do purchase their, their property. So nothing further, your worship?
You, Councilor Hooper?
Yeah, thank you. On the reparking restrictions, uh, three to four hours, that goes in line with the parking permits. Are we saying we're going to have paid parking throughout the village? Is that a recommendation or are we? If you could answer that question, oh, would you want to implement paid parking throughout the village?
Uh, definitely not. We, uh, as part of the, the report, we, we noted that pay parking is, is, uh, appropriate in the areas with, surrounded by commercial land uses and that experience high parking demand. Uh, and in our, in our findings, we found that, that Lilwet, um, and the other two streets that I had, had mentioned, let me just pull it up quickly. It's, uh, Cedar and Maple are, are the, are the streets that are most appropriate. So we wouldn't be implementing pay parking throughout the entire system. These, um, the residential permits are, are intended to be distributed for, for free to the local residents to, to allow them to continue parking as they do today.
So you've got paid parking on the area on your Exhibit Three Six. It would just be the areas there from, including Naismith, uh, Cottonwood, Driftwood, Hansam Miami and the rest of it. Uh, um, now with the development residence permits, uh, um, would you anticipate residence permits in the other areas like, uh, um, south of Eagle? That area? Because what I'm trying to get at is that if we're going to impose all these, uh, um, bylaws and the rest of it on vehicles not being able to park outside property for forty-eight hours without moving, uh, I think it becomes a joke if they're just going to drive around the block and come back and park in the same area. Should these areas not be zoned with a note saying, no return within eight hours or within a day? That would solve a lot of the problems of all this, uh, um, maximum of four hours restrictions and the rest of it.
Yeah, that, that could certainly be added to, to the recommendation to prevent people from just moving your vehicle to start a new three to four hour window. Uh, yes.
Also, if we're implementing permits for areas, when someone's having building works done or deliveries and that, it's going to cost staff time and money to actually, uh, run, suspend these parking days. Uh, um, so it's not just, uh, um, the thirty thousand, the forty thousand, it's a suspension of parking base. Who puts out the notices, the cones and the rest of it? Uh, um, and it's just increasing staff's time. Um, we, we need to be looking at this in a different manner. Uh, um, if we're going to implement, we've got bylaws now that say you can't park in forty, for forty-eight hours or more. But do we implement them? We only implement them when somebody complains. If we're going to implement this, we have to have someone going around the streets actually enforcing it. Which brings me on to the additional enforcement officer. Now, if he's going around all the residential areas and the rest of it, it's going to cost us a great deal of money. Um, and the one-side parking, that, I'm sorry, but that always makes me laugh because you can park on one side of the road. Now, I've, I've just been down, uh, Schooner. And outside one house is a trailer and outside another one, there is a large, uh, works van. Now, they might live on the other side of the road. You could ask them to park outside somebody's house and obstruct their views from their windows and the rest of it. Wouldn't it be better to have alternate parking, like Monday, Wednesdays, Fridays, Sundays, one side of the road? Tuesdays, Thursdays, that, the other side of the road to give people a break? Also, you say about narrow roads and right-of-ways, uh, um. If we, if you've got a narrow road and we're putting parking on one side and we're forcing residents, mothers with prams, pushchairs strollers, whatever you want to call them, and people walking their dogs in the road, shouldn't we be imposing a speed limit on these roads? And if we impose a speed limit on these roads, how do we enforce it? Is it with traffic calming? I mean, you, you've done a great job on this and I've got no complaints, but it's thrown up so many more questions that I've dealt with in the past. Um, so if you want to answer the questions on, on them forward, then we move on to the next slide.
Uh, yes, certainly.
I have to speak as well, councillor. Thank you.
Sorry?
I have to speak as well. To speak as well.
I mean, Slide Ten, which is part of this.
Uh, please carry on, Attila, if you have any comments, uh, from, from Councillor Hooper's, um, question.
Yes, uh, def- definitely. Thank you for the opportunity. The, uh, the additional enforcement, yes, it's recognized that it comes with a, quite a hefty price tag. And that's in addition to the, the thirty, forty thousand that's noted for facilitating the permit program. Uh, through discussion with village staff, I, I believe it was, is close to maybe a hundred thousand dollars per, per bylaw officer over the four summer months. So it's certainly an, an additional cost. So we have to be evaluated whether there is the, the desire to prevent those, those visitor park or visitor user, visitors from, from using the residential air, areas. So it's not something that would have to be decided or a difficult decision on, on the, the village's side that needs to be decided. Because these three, they go hand in hand, the restrictions, the permits and the, the additional enforcement. Uh, when it comes to the one-sided parking, uh, there's, there's certainly some municipalities that, uh, that alternate between the side of the street. And that's, that's something that can definitely be done. Uh, my, my thought would be, would be not to alternate on a daily basis since, since that could lead to some user confusion and then some disputes to ticketing and then issues with that. The, the, the more common approach is to split the year. So for, for six months of the year, you park on one side and then the other six months, it's, it's the flip side. So it's a little bit easier for, for the parking users to understand, but it's still meeting the, the same objective.
Yeah, just to answer your point on the six months, one side, six months, the other. I mean, in the summer, when you want to look out your window, for six months, you're looking at the side of a ten-foot works van or somebody's trailer. And then in the winter, well, you don't want to look out the window because it's raining and snowing and that. So the, the six months time is, is far too long. It's worked very well in, throughout Europe to do alternate days and the rest of it. Or just to have, say, Monday, Wednesday, Fri- Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, one side, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the other. Uh, um, the six months is, is far too long. Uh, um, if you go on to the next slide, please. Number ten. With parking within Lilwet, if we've got any concerns about health and safety with parking in Lilwet, it should be passed on to the highways agency. They're the people responsible for it. And if we impose paid parking there, are we going to do it or are they going to do it? What costs? So, no. I've said about the RV parking. Throughout the municipality where you used to work in, back in London, they've got thousands of charges in land columns and the rest of it. Uh, um, and that would be the idea. Uh, and increased parking prices as special events. Now, I've, I've read your report and you, you say that, uh, um, we'd be dealing with the, uh, open, uh, piece of land behind the village office in the OCP. But looking at it, we are getting rid of the event area. We can't allow uh, um, people that are taking part in these events to park their caravans, trailers and the rest of it on our roads. Our bylaws don't allow it. Uh, we can't say to them, well, Saturday's done, you can drive all the way home and drive all the way back again for Sunday because that just puts up our emissions. Um, uh, and also by not using this piece of land to its full potential for this, we are now moving parking away from the core center of the village by about fifty percent of what that is. Uh, um, so that increased the parking price, the prices, you've already said, it takes two, it's about five thousand dollars to actually change all the meters for one day, two days, and then changing back again. It really doesn't make that amount of sense. Uh, um, but no, the, the, we need an area for the events for them to put their dragon boats, their squash days, their caravans, their trailers and the rest of it. Because they can't park on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Can, uh, go back to number nine, please? Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm totally against the three to four hour parking along residential streets closest to the waterfront. I think I've heard councillors say, look, look here, we're looking at here probably ten weekends of the year, maybe nine or ten, where we get terribly busy. Weekdays, it's, we want to have it busy, don't get me wrong. But, uh, it's never as busy during, during the weekdays as is obviously on the weekends and long weekends, of course. And providing you don't block somebody's driveway, that the streets are there for parking. I mean, I have no, no problem somebody parking outside my house all day if they wish. On a, because I know that those visitors are going to be spending money in the village and that's, uh, that's what it's all about. So I don't, I don't think that should be, uh, the, I think that the, a problem, um, well, I'll come back when we get on to Lilwet. Um, the permit situation is going to be a nightmare to, um, to police. Um, it's, it's, probably isn't really needed. And whether it's the whole village or just the, the ones closest to the, um, the waterfront, I don't think that's needed at all. Um, most people are pretty good about parking. If they block somebody's driveway, well, you call the police and they'll come along and, uh, get it moved. Um, additional bylaw officer, of course, that's out of the question. We're already, we're already, um, up, up to our budget, uh, the last two years, last year and this year in regards to, um, bylaw enforcement in, in, uh, in, in the village. Uh, now, the, the restrict parking to one side along streets. Now, the number one we should be taking care of, and I hope we deal with it this year, is from Lilwet to the four-way on Eagle, four-way at Naismith. That should be one-side parking on the west side and the east side should be no parking whatsoever. That, that's, that's, that, that causes a, a lot of problems in the summer when they're parked on both sides of that road. And that's a very busy, used road. From, um, and, uh, from, um, uh, the McCoon's, the, the, from the bridge to, to, um, to Emerald, uh, that, that should be one-side parking there, which obviously will be because we're, when our new extra, no parking signs arrive, they will be installed along the new, um, gravel pathway there. So that, that hopefully will take care of that. Now, in regards to councillor, um, Hooper brought it up, I mean, in, 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 in regards to speed, well, we've discussed this before and I have a letter from the ministry which states that now municipalities can, can control their own speeds. And has to be done by bylaw, I believe. But that, I believe from Lilwet, Eagle, all the way to McPherson should be a forty kilometers zone. Because we're trying to, that, that road is used by a lot of residents and tourists because of the east sector. It's made a big difference in safety with the gravel pathway and now the crosswalk and, and, and with the, uh, stoplights. But, uh, we have to, we have to keep improving that area because that is the, the, as they called it, the, it's long enough to land an airplane, it's so long that street. So I think that, that has to be controlled with, um, speed limit and with the parking. Uh, like I've said, on Eagle, Lilwet to Naismith on the, uh, west side only and the east side, no parking. Uh, and the rest of it, I don't know why, with all And the rest of it, I don't know why, with all due respects to our group here, that the streets like Spinnaker Wind and the others were mentioned, I don't think they're wide enough to have any parking on the streets. I mean, we're probably going to be looking at restricting parking anyway certain times of the year so we can get snow clearing done. So I don't think those streets should be even considered for one-sided parking, whether it's for a week or six months. I mean, we're adding more problems to the whole situation here. We're a small village with a small staff, limited funds on how we'll deal, especially with bylaw enforcement. And we cannot take care of those things like that. It's impossible. It's, I mean, Pine is an example. From the branches entrance of the townhouses to Hot Springs Road, that should be no parking either side because of the bend on the road. That's a no-brainer, that one there, right away. So yeah, I'm against the three to four-hour parking. I don't think it's needed. I don't think we need a parking permit because of the policing and the extra costs. And I don't think that the public would be very, would be very good towards raising taxes, which would be a forty thousand dollars, roughly a four percent tax increase alone there. And restrict, well, I've already spoken about the one-sided. Can we get to the next slide, please? Implement paid parking operation on Lilwet Avenue. Well, I just, council and Attila would give me a few minutes here now. This is dated January the fourth, two thousand and sixteen, from the Ministry of British Columbia Highways. In regards to our request at that time to repay parking on Lilwet Avenue. And regarding the specific topic of placing municipal parking meters provincial right-of-ways, as mentioned in our meeting, there are several challenges that will disallow the installation. The main factors are jurisdiction, legal authority, and not only install the meters, but also administer parking rates, collect fees, as well as the enforcement and prosecution of many non-compliant users. Regarding enforcement prosecution without the legal authority to install or administer fees or fines, there is a term in no legal basis to enforce. This was an important issue at UBC many years ago, where fines up to four million dollars had to be returned, as it should never happen there. Section six, two point one, "A person must not use or occupy, including do anything or cause anything to be constructed or deposited on provincial public highway or land or improvement-related provincial public highway, unless a person is authorized to do so." The second is a collection of parking fees. We do not have regulatory authority, mechanism, process, ability to collect fees for parking on provincial highway. Even if we were able to proceed, as it is a provincial infrastructure, the village of Harrison Hot Springs would not have regulatory jurisdiction to legally collect fees either. The third point is the enforcement of parking. As it is provincial infrastructure, local bylaw officers would not have jurisdiction to enforce, and even if they did, the village of Harrison would not have any legal mechanism to administer or collect fines. An argument could be made that the RCMP officers are able to enforce laws and provincial infrastructure, which is true of all police officers, but the argument would need to meet the test of the above overriding points. So that gives you some outline that unless things are changed, and I haven't heard that they've changed, that you can, we can forget about paid parking on Lilwet. In regards to parking on Lilwet, I believe that there's unnecessary parking there from residents. And that these residents to have their own parking spaces in their own developments approved of the safety of that road was a few weeks ago, with the build-up of snow there, and the ploughs couldn't get close to the curbs because of all the cars that were parked there, and it was a danger at night because there was piles of snow built up all along there. So those spaces, and now these include the ones across the road as well, it could take up sometimes, when I count thirty to fifty cars, that could be in their own spots. And that's from the Cascades all the way down to, we've got people using our washrooms, going from the Cascades going down to the Echo Beach. So there's an area there that I think should have some control, and maybe that should have a timed parking there, because whether it's our residents who want to go for a coffee or visitors on the weekends who need that parking, there's parking spaces, at least thirty or up to fifty, that could be used by other people. So how do we deal with that? That's another matter. What do we have to do with the, with the strata boards? I'm not sure, but that's the situation I think that has to be addressed on Lilwet Avenue. The highways recommended the angled parking years ago, which gave us more spaces on the south side. Evening charging stations in line with British, oh, well, that's, we've discussed that. Increased parking prices, well, that's another discussion for council to look at. BC Transit is doing a good job at the moment. Services have been increased, even weekends, I believe. And event organisers, at one time, they used to share one of the lots, and that now has been turned into a parking lot, private. And the, there is no problem with the, with the actual dragon boats. They are not stored on the empty land. They are, and also our First Nations Sasquatch days, all the canoes are unloaded onto the beach, so they're not, the land is used for security and for overflow parking, but not for their equipment. So that's in that regard. And so that's my comments on that. I don't know if you have any, any words to say on that, Attila?
Yes, certainly. Going back to the previous slide. If there is the appetite to allow waterfront visitors to park in the residential neighbourhoods, then I definitely agree this thirty or thirty-four-hour parking restriction becomes unnecessary, and it becomes a domino effect at that point. If there's no thirty-four-hour restriction, then there's no need for the residential permits, because the residents can continue parking as they do today, and without the permits, there's no need for the additional enforcement. So it really comes down to the village's desire. And to our understanding, it was, there was a desire to prevent the water flow spill-over into the residential areas. That's where these recommendations stem from. But if that's not a concern, then these recommendations could be scrapped. And I think at that point, it becomes more of a public education piece, since this was a common complaint that we heard during the public engagement session, was the local residents were unhappy that there was the spill-over. So I think at that point, it becomes a communication from the village and council to the residents that this is something we're accepting as a way to increase tourism and add of town visitors from travelling to the village and bringing in their business.
How many more slides do we have, Attila?
We have one more for short term and then two more, I believe, for long term. Yeah, so three more.
Three more?
Three, yes.
Thirty?
Three, three.
Thirty, three. I just asked council now, it's now noon. Do you wish to continue with the full report? Because there are the two other areas that if we don't discuss them here, we'll have to, we'll have to put them off to another meeting regarding the off-dog leash area and the washrooms on Spring Park. So do you want to carry on with this, which I knew would take a long time, this parking master plan? Or what is your time factor here for all of council? Are you all free to continue with this? Yeah, carry on. Just give me a shout.
My vote would be to continue on your worship and perhaps if that's the decision, we could take a small break.
I'll do the small break in a minute, but just want to get councillors free. Do you want to continue, councillors? Just put your hands up, please, with this. Good enough, just put your hand up, and we'll know.
No, I mean, every time we go through this, we're all going over our ground, which is taking the time. We know what's there, if we can all see a part of this, because there's a number of other questions that we're not going to be able to ask this time. Some really important ones for the residents and that. So if we carry on with this, the way we're going, we're not going to finish this on the slides we've seen so far for another two hours. So no, I think finish with this and just have an open questions session on this.
Well, we're not going to, I don't think we're going to have time to go back on what you discussed. Thirty more slides to go through. So I mean, any outstanding issues that a councillor may have, you can bring that forward to the staff. But the only question I'm asking now, do you wish to continue with this? Yes or no, councillor Hooper? You don't want to continue with this, councillor Piper?
I'm fine with proceeding.
Councillor Palmer? Fine, that's fine. That's all I want to know. If you have the time, if you're staying, if you have the time, or you have to leave, as we have a quorum, we will continue. So that, it is now noon. We'll have a ten-minute break, and then we'll reconvene again. Thank you. Okay, folks, being twelve sixteen, we will reconvene. And we are now on topic, transportation demand. Is the, the group still here? Yes, they wish. Oh, there he is. You ready to go, Attila?
I'm here and ready to go.
Okay, good. Okay, so where are we now? We'll start reverse order with councillor Hooper.
Good afternoon. We're talking about expanding the transportation demand and that. Be quite honest, you're not going to get anyone from Chilowet come to Harrison by transit with their chairs, their cooler boxes and everything else. It's going to be vehicles. Expanding the Fraser Valley cycling network, I've already, I'm part of the coalition for the cyclists, and they're already looking at doing the dykes and the rest of it, which I do know that now that Agassi's on board with. But again, it's just going to be cyclists coming here. They're not going to be able to buy a lot, and they have to get home before the dark. Expand the sidewalks. I wish we would. Because without expanding the sidewalks, we're putting residents and their children and everybody at risk. So yes, I'm all with that one. Update the zoning, existing zoning bylaws for parking. We've got a fairly substantial one now. But we only enforce it when there's a complaint. People are parking constantly on areas where they shouldn't. They're not moving the vehicles in time. And so it's no good expanding any bylaws or anything like that unless we're prepared to actually enforce them. And the increase in cash-in lieu of the parking rate for twenty-three thousand dollars per space. I'd like to see all-year paid parking for the, from, on Espinard from Harrison, from Hot Springs Road down to the St Alice, because a majority of them spaces are taken up by hotel staff and that outside this. I went to one of the restaurants the other day with my family and this. That, I had to park in St Alice to walk to the restaurant because all the other vehicles that aren't there are from hotels. So increase the parking rate. I mean, we can't increase it so much before people turn around and say, it isn't worth going there. It's costing too much money.
Excuse me, councillor, just if I help you along here. The cash-in lieu is for development. You don't have enough parking on your development. At the moment, it's fifteen thousand. Increase it to twenty-three thousand. I believe that's what.
It says increase.
Is that what it's, excuse me, is that what it's meant, Attila?
Yes, that's exactly it. Thank you.
It says up there, twenty-three thousand dollars per space.
And that's for zoning if a development doesn't have enough parking?
Well, it should say zoning rather than space, because if you take it as space for each vehicle, it's ridiculous. But no, I'd like to see all-year-round parking from Hot Springs Road to the St Alice on that part of Espinard. Just to stop the hotels from taking up the spaces. That's about it on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we've got the councillor Vidal.
Thank you. Worshipful, you do our consultant, the increase in cash-in lieu to twenty-three thousand per space. Is that pretty, pretty much an industry-wide standard?
Yes, it's based on an industry standard best practice of approximately splitting the cost fifty-fifty between the developer and the municipality. So the idea with that is that any, so I guess, should I go into a little bit of background about what cash-in lieu parking is? And I'm not sure if council has an understanding of what it is, and if you do, then I definitely don't want to provide an explanation if it's not needed.
Yeah, I'm pretty upon a lovely, ugly council. Is also, yeah, I'm just always curious as to where you came up with that figure. The transportation demand.
Sorry, did you mind if I, I didn't finish the answer. I wanted to provide a little bit more background, if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so it's based on a fifty-fifty split in that case, recognising that any parking that the municipality constructs would be available to all net uses, including the development, but certainly not just that one development. So that's where the fifty-fifty split comes from. And through our research, we found that any structured parking supply has an average cost of forty-six thousand dollars in the Vancouver area. So we divided that average cost by two to get the twenty-three thousand dollars, which, given Harrison Hot Springs's parking system is operating at capacity or close to capacity near the waterfront, it's anticipated as parking demand grows, a structured parking supply expansion is likely going to be necessary. So that's where the twenty-three comes from.
Thank you for that. And also for the transportation demand management. Expand the Fraser Valley cycling route network. I know some devices that have become more popular are the, I think they're EV scooters and other ones that I think use a battery. So I'm just curious, when you talked about those kind of needs, is that included when you recommended including or expanding this cycle network? network? Because I, I do believe we do, or at least in my opinion, that we do have substantial areas for the cycling along here. So can you expand a little bit on that? Thank you.
Yes, definitely. So this recommendation is, is giving a nod towards the recently completed active transportation, active transportation plan. So the recommendation is just, is noting to, to go ahead and proceed with what was recommended there, noting that any improvements to alternative modes of transportation would have a positive impact on parking demand. So if less people are on the road, then less people are going to be in the parking lots. When it comes to the cycling routes, they're, they're traditionally called cycling lanes or cycling routes, but in, in the reality, that same right of way is used by micro mobility and, and micro mobility is what you were referring to, the, the e-scooters, that also includes e-bikes and all other forms of, of other forms of micro mobility. So those, those type of, that type of mode share would certainly be captured by the, the cycling route network as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Nothing further at this time, your worship.
Hey councillor, councillor Palmer?
The transportation event management, that's great. We need to significantly improve our cycling route network. I think it'll draw a different type of tourists. Those are great. Sidewalks, we have a shortage of sidewalks. Sometimes I drive around, I can't believe areas were developed without them in the past. So the first three, I'm, I'm great with. The zoning bylaw update, that's fine. The cash in lieu though, that, that's been a topic for me for a while. I wish that didn't say increase to, to twenty three thousand. If there's not a replacement number, I'd rather have the words significantly increase the cash in loop. What concerns me, and I understand the formula that you've indicated. When I talk to people that are developers, very few of them tell me they can build by the land and build a parking spot for forty six thousand dollars. The number I usually hear is, is more. Now, if I'm going to do a development in Harrison and I either have to pay fifty thousand dollars to create the space or even if I could pay the village twenty three thousand dollars, I'd much rather pay the village twenty three thousand dollars and be short the spot. And I think that's a bad incentive, particularly when, if the city, if the village gets the money, we don't have other parking spots that are magically made to make up the difference. So I would like to, in terms of the cash in lieu, I think that amount should be much higher. There should be a disincentive to come to the village and not have adequate parking. So, you know, that number should be more like fifty thousand dollars. And I, I know it's a number out of my hat, but if it's a goal over the next four years, I just think getting to twenty three thousand doesn't solve the problem. You are still incentivizing builders to come and ask for relaxations because it saves them money. And even if we collected twenty three thousand, we can't do anything with it. We don't have, you can't build a, even a lot of that, a lot of collection is not going to provide us with a parking structure. So I think we need to make sure that developers put adequate parking in their, in their buildings, without question. So I think that that's got to be significantly increased. So the, the formula for twenty three thousand isn't adequate, anywhere near adequate in, in my mind. So that's, that, that would be the only thing. So of that list, great, fine, fine. But the it either should say cash in lieu with a much higher number, or it should just say significantly increased cash in loop. But twenty three thousand should not be a target. Thanks.
Thank you. Any comments from yourself, Atilla?
Yes, yeah, just to, for the cash in lieu. It's just because it's an, it's a industry best, best practice or the typical target doesn't necessarily mean that it's appropriate for every single municipality. If there's the if you think it's more appropriate for your local community to have a much higher rate, then, then that may make sense for, for Harrison Hot Springs. So definitely not opposed to increasing it to a higher number per se. And the, the difference is that if, the, the idea is that the, both the village and the developer would contribute to an equal share towards any new parking, any new parking spaces. And, and if we're talking about, and that's the four, the forty six, six thousand dollars come from. I do want to note that that's structured parking. If we're talking about underground parking, the price tag would, would be higher for sure. So we're around the sixty thousand dollar mark, I believe.
Councillor Piper?
Thank you, worship. I'll start off with the coordination or the the request to increase service with Route eleven. So I, I say this, I, I understand it's a bit of a longer term request, but I would proceed with great caution with that. I deeply believe a community of our size is very, very lucky to have transit service in and out of the community that connects to other communities. So I, I caution because I don't want us to get too big for our britches and, and start to, you know, advocate changes to routes. I, I say that out of one side of my mouth with, with future thoughts, how that could come to be. I do like the shuttle service idea. I think that could be attainable. I do worry about tax implications and subsidization with those, with those services. I, I believe we need to get our active transportation infrastructure up and running. It needs to be a priority. We need people to feel comfortable walking and cycling or wheeling. And I mean, society is so vehicle centric. So we have to have other choices for people, whether it's a perception of, of safety or not, to feel comfortable choosing other modes to come to the community and travel in and around municipal, our municipal boundaries. On street parking, along with planting or infrastructure design and implements all contribute positively to reducing vehicle speeds. I was, before the break, there was, there was comments about vehicle speed. So on street parking can also be viewed as a positive and should be considered that. I'll leave it at that. I've got more closing comments. Thank you, worship.
Thank you councillor. Back to the beginning. Also. Any comments for councillor Piper?
I do not know. No, please proceed.
Thank you. Where are we? Wasn't there three? Is that just the two subjects, was there on this one?
Just, just the two, yes. The next one will be the long term.
Well, as, as councillor knows, and I make reports now and gain, I mean, back in the day all we could rely on in Harrison was the, the Greyhound bus service. For people to get here or leave here. Eventually, we were lucky enough through working with the District of Kent to get a bus service going. And then when the regional district took it over with B C Transit, the service improved tremendously. So it's, it is another form of those people that you, you could travel from Vancouver, from Horseshoe Bay to Harrison if you wanted to do several stops. But I'll, I'll take Chilowack and Abbisford as our closest. But I suppose for a day visitor just wants to come to Harrison for the day to to lay on the beach or go for walks or take some of the other or have a bite to eat. That transportation is very important. Also, it's very important for our students who go to the, the Fraser Valley College in Chilowack and beyond to, to Abbisford as well. So that's, we, we continue with the regional district to improve that route. We're trying to, it does now go to Hope. And now we're working on the next stage from Agassi to, to Mission. The, the cycling network, well, that's, that's, that's well advertised by tourism Harrison. We have a a very vibrant group who do the cycle farm tours during the, during the spring or late spring, I suppose, in summer months. And there's several cycling enthusiasts there that like to use the, the existing trail. Some are, some are not as wide as people would have liked on Hot Springs Road. But it's what it is. They improved it, the highways department. We have a narrow one on the west side of our village and a larger one on the east side. But cycling overall within the village. I, I mean, this is from my perspective. I haven't heard from any other councillor this term or from any public people that somebody has had an accident hit by a car cycling within the village boundaries. So we're, you know, with the wide roads from the the new, I call it the WASC subdivision, as it used to be called. There's, there's lots of, they're very wide roads and it's pretty, pretty safe for, for people to ride. That's why I'm, I'm really pushing for the reduction in speed. Overall, in the, in the village boundaries, not the highways, of course, that's another discussion. To reduce the speed as well because our residents do like to walk. When sidewalks would come in, that's a costly thing and part of your boulevard, whether you know it or not, which we maintain ourselves and cut the grass and extend our driveways, that is part, belongs to the village. Part of that, but I think it's either ten feet, I'm guessing, of boulevard. So, and developers, when we can, we do ask them to put in sidewalks like we did on, on Macooms and and originally on Lilwet, when the condos were first built there, they put them in. I mean, we, we, we're dealing with a couple now. They're going to be putting in sidewalks when the developments are finished on Espinar, but they're short sidewalks. I don't, they won't meet up with anything else till the village can afford to expand on them. So it's, it's a cost, it's a cost situation. But overall, the village is a is a safe place to, to walk and cycle. But the one siding parking, and I've lost the screen with what I'm talking about.
Rhonda?
Is my screen share not, not coming through?
No, I've lost the screen I was talking about. Number eleven. Here we go. Okay, so that's, so that, anyway, that's, that's an on, we'll expand as we, as we can, as we move forward. In regards to the existing zoning, parking requires to better reflect existing parking demand generation. Well, that's, that becomes a zoning situation. Increase cash in lieu. Like I said, it's fifteen thousand at the moment per space. It does go into reserve, I believe. But maybe council at some point should be maybe looking at, looking at this report. Looking at, in moving along at, at land acquisition to reflect, either it be for parking or for other other infrastructure that as the village gets bigger, we will need into the future. So that's, that's for another discussion. So that's my comments. Atilla on that? I don't know if you have anything to say on that?
Nothing further to add.
Okay, the next slide please. Okay, long term, five plus years. We start reverse with councillor Piper.
Thank you, worship. I think I've said almost everything I, I can possibly say. So I'm feeling a bit for the consultant. I want to extend my thanks. I know that you worked within the scope that you were provided in order to develop the, the plan. And I know it, it was obvious that you took our comments from the last time you were in front of us presenting. You took all those comments seriously and, and wove them into, to the final report here. So for that, my thanks. My concern is I worry that a great portion of the plan is not achievable for, for our village. And that's the reality of the costs. That's the reality of our infrastructure. And that saddens me greatly. I, I'll leave with this comment because there's, when you talk parking in the village of Harrison Hot Springs, everybody has an opinion. And on street parking, it's a, it's a privilege. It's not an inherent right. And yes, signage can help. Yes, education can help and yes, enforcement can help. But we, we live in a resort municipality that, and Mayor Fassio has, has, has said it the entire time that I've known him. That we couldn't survive without our business community. We wouldn't, I, I hope I'm quoting you correctly, but we as homeowners wouldn't be able to afford the taxes without our business community. So that's, that's our industry is tourism. And with tourism comes people. And people get here by bus, by bike, but mostly by vehicle. So we need to find ways to accommodate that for those two to four months that parking is at a premium in town. So I'll leave it at that. I thank the consultant. You've done a very nice job on your report. I know you were within scope and thank you for your time today.
Thank you councillor. Any comments from yourself, Atilla?
Yeah, it's always great to hear kind words. Definitely appreciate that. So, so I'll start with saying, saying thank you. And I do want to note that the, we didn't, we didn't, didn't have access to, to village budget unfortunately. So we, we did our best to summarize recommendations that we feel would, would improve. And at this point, I, I think it would be, would be up, up to the village to, I guess, pick, pick and choose and see which, you know, given the, the budget constraints, which one, which ones would, were, are the most appropriate. When we did our, our best to identify knowing that there are budget constraints, the, the quick wins that can be implemented quickly and at relatively low, low cost for, for immediate impacts.
Thank you kindly for that. Thank you.
Thank you both. Councillor Palmer?
Yeah, the pay parking expansion, that could be controversial, but certainly something to be put there to be looked at. That would probably make some sense, particularly as more development happens on Cedar. The EV parking, again, I think that's great. Obviously, the, the more charging stations are better, as long as we can be in a position where it's cost recovery, then that makes perfect sense. And again, the last recommendation waterfront parking supply. Obviously, yeah, we have to deal, there's got to be some long term parking and if building a parking facility is affordable and we are able to come up with the funds to do so, that would be a, a good long term solution. So I'm, I'm good with those long term recommendations of five years and plus. Thank you.
Hey councillor, councillor Vidal? Atilla, do you have any comments for councillor Palmer?
Yeah, just to actually one item to, to build upon, the, the future or the parking supply recommendation is, as it was discussed earlier on. It's, it's the council's appetite to allow or continue allowing visitor parking demand into residential areas, which throughout the course of this study was, was, was actually not, not considered. So what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that if, if that's, if that's desired to be maintained, then that actually increases the available parking supply. So that the constraints that we're discussing in the report won't be quite as high because we'll, we'll now have those additional on street spaces in the residential areas that can continue to serve the discussing in the report won't be quite as high because we'll, we'll now have those additional on-street spaces in the residential areas that can continue to serve the visitors.
Thank you. Sorry, councillor Vidal, please carry on.
Thank you, Your Worship. Five plus year to implement pay parking operations along Cedar Avenue and Maple Street. I think five plus years is too long to wait for that. And Cedar Avenue especially has, you know, that combination of some commercial and some resident. So I, I do believe again, again with budget that we should consider moving that forward a few years. It would provide some additional parking spaces. And that would be something that council, you know, future councils could possibly, could possibly look at. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a comment and a little bit of a story. So I hope you'll indulge me. Myself and my family, like many other people in Harrison, years ago, used to come out and, and in, in, enjoy Harrison. So when retirement came, this is where myself and, and my husband chose, chose to live. But when I walked the beach during the summer, I come across people and I'm always curious to, and ask them, you know, what made you move to Harrison or, or just in casual conversation, wanting, you know, visitors to enjoy their day. And the number one, number two comments I always hear is I moved to Harrison when I retired because I enjoyed bringing my family out here, which is my situation. And I ask people who were down, enjoying our beach and barbecuing and they're with families. And I often hear, I'm going to move to Harrison when I retire. So having said that, I think we need to look at long-term plans for providing additional parking space. And it certainly cannot be up to this council to make that decision. But I agree strongly with Mayor Fazio that this council will be able to implement probably some short-term goals or, or, or short-term adjustments. But whatever next council is, I think it would be very wise of them and as councillor Palmer said, either to take in lieu of funds and put it towards acquisition of land or, or parking, parkade of, of sunset. Once a visitor population and, you know, expanded and tourism Harrison is doing a wonderful job with trying to make our village now more of a year-round destination. But again, that's going to take quite a few years. So with that, I, as just as a closing remark, I also want to thank you for the work, tremendous amount of work that you have put in to developing this parking master plan. And I appreciate that. You know, you, you come from an independent lens and that is exactly what I think was needed. So again, thank you. As you can probably see, council here does not agree or feel budget restraints or whatever. We could implement every single one of your recommendations. But again, I, I do appreciate the work you've done. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hooper?
Yes, thank you. A question first of all for councillor Piper. I hope I didn't, I might have misunderstood you. Did you say that a large proportion of this plan is not achievable by the village?
But the high numbers, I mean, we've got a lot of work to do on our active transportation that should run in parallel, in my opinion, to parking. So, yeah, when we're talking an eighteen million dollar, almost nineteen million dollar waterfront parking supply solution. Yeah, not achievable in my opinion. So, yeah, you heard me correct.
Yeah, I'm afraid I'm going to disagree with that because we've got the plan in front of us. It just needs some on-tuning. There are some elements that I'm unhappy with, but unless we're going to work the consultant to actually overcome these, we've achieved nothing. I mean, street parking operations to be extended along Cedar and Maple, that should have been done years ago. And obviously Cedar with, with the condition of the road net. But if we, once we've done this forced main adjustment, I lost the connection. Once we've done this full, it's going to be resurfaced completely. The plan to provide EVs of charging stations in line with the sales targets. I mean, if we're talking for visitors coming in, we're talking about running nine bays going to EV. Which to me is wrong, but if we can have parking in just control park and just some other areas, then we can achieve that by having it connected to the, the lamp columns. Exploring the opportunities to create parking in the waterfront developments. They can't provide enough for their selves at the moment. A standalone parking facility, I've brought up many a times now and it's always been shot down. As for putting it in line with the active transportation plan, if you go back to the last meeting we had on this, I think just before this, about October last year, I did say that this plan should be put together with active transportation, street calming or traffic calming and with traffic management. I can't blame the contra, the consultant for any of this, but I don't know specifically what his remit was on this. I mean, yes, I'm unhappy with a couple of areas, but we can work with it. To say offhand it's not achievable is, well, I didn't ask for the plan. I voted against it. But to actually vote for it and then say, you know, we're not going to deal with it makes no sense to me at all. Thank you.
Any comments from yourself, Attila?
Not none at this time.
Thank you. In regards to pay parking, yes, Cedar would have to be at, if it was at the moment, but would have to be Cedar West for pay parking. That's the only one that has a sidewalk on the west, on the south side. Maple Street would be a no because there's a sidewalk there with no parking at all. The road is too narrow to have cars parked there from my perspective. And on the, the one that's been left out of the, of the plan is Lilwet West, which is the village's street. And there's quite a bit of parking that could be accommodated there, which would bring us the extra vet revenue if going back to councillor Palmer's comments, if we lost some of that revenue through, I forget, was it to do with the fifteen minute or the, or the EV? So we could make up that revenue if Lilwet West was used for pay parking. And that on the, on the south side, that's easy to accomplish. On the north side, a little bit different because we got gravel in between the trees there, but I suppose something could be done. It would be depend on when the new complex is completed, there'll be a sidewalk there. Now that's going to pan out. But Lilwet was left out of the picture, I believe. So I think that's an important one to, to consider. EV charging, we've discussed this already. That councillor Palmer says it's, the way the industry is going, it's, it's going to be electric vehicles or the hybrids, whichever you want to look at it. But I mean, take, take a small place like Hope. I mean, they've got so many charging machines there, people, well, not even enough, I believe. A few months ago, they were queuing up to try and get on the charges. But it's a thing that's coming. Regional district has built a very large one that you can, you can charge up, I think in twenty minutes or the slow one that takes two or three hours. They're free at the moment. Public parking new development, I'm afraid that's a no-go because new developments, as the some council members have already mentioned, we have to have big discussions with these new developments that, no, you have to try and build your development to accommodate the parking that you want. I mean, it's very nice to receive all this money for off-street parking, but it doesn't help the village. So that scenario of trying to get new development to have parking for public is, 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 to me, is, is I don't think it would work out anyway. Shared parking, again, that's an agreement I don't think would work with the hotels in regards to agree, agree with them in regards to, to have a, have a, a shared interest with extra parking. It's, it's just, it, it, it's just a major headache. It, it just, anyway, I, I'm not, I wouldn't be in favor of that. Again, I will go back to what council has been talking. We have a master, traction master plan and also this one. There's still a lot to be considered and discussed. Our revenues will only cover so much as we go along. This is, we're always looking, like we do a five-year plan in our budgets, like we have to nowadays. But here we're looking at five-plus years, but the there's areas of, small areas like Cedar and Lilwet that could be implemented much sooner, of course, if I'm from, for the, if we wanted to gain more revenue from pay, from, from pay parking. I want to, I think you've done a very good job of, of your overall plan that you've presented. It's, it took me four hours to read it, but it, it was well worth it. I anticipated a long meeting today to, to deal with this. I know there's councillors that have other areas of concern. I would suggest to those councillors that they present any further information to our staff to pass on to you, if they wish to, in regards to any, any any changes that you might or going to make on what we've discussed this morning. Again, thank you to yourself and to Janice. Is this the last one, Attila?
Yes, that's correct. This is the, the last council meeting.
The last one, okay. Well, if council doesn't have any further questions for, for the group here, I'll, I'll move on. You have a question, councillor?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I'll be really quick. On your figurework here for the parking, what size base did you use and what width base? Was it six point five on one point eight or six point five and two point five?
So just by clarifying the, what you mean by that question, are you talking about the, the estimated parking supply in the residential areas?
Yes.
We used the, the length. So we, we measured the length of the village, villages' parking spaces. I think it was six point five meters that we used for, for length.
Right. And what distance did each bay end before they got to residents' driveways? Is it one meter, four feet, one point two? I'm thinking of the side line equals reversing out.
Right there. We, we didn't go into too, too much in, in depth, like measurements when it came to estimating. It was just a high level. How, how many, approximately how many vehicles we could fit in here with the six point five meter width. So we, we didn't break, bring, bring a, you know, a measuring wheel or a meter wheel to, to calculate the exact number of spaces. The, the idea was to get to the, the right ballpark number.
I've read some of IBI's other parking reports. And on most of them, they states that the inclusion of paid parking will add to the value of the surrounding properties. This was in the one from Hamilton, I do believe, and the rest of it. My concern is, is that it will only add to the vacant land because it will allow developers to say, we can increase the far area on this because we got on-street parking. I'm just playing with a few, few ideas here. So would you consider that installing some form of parking control would increase the cost, that it would increase the price for the developer of the land that they've got?
That's a, that's, that's a good question. That land value takes actually into consideration for reiteration. It's, it's not my area of expertise, but to my understanding, there's quite a lot of different factors that go into, to land value. As, as Harrison Hot Springs becomes more popular tourist destination, the, the land value will go up just as, as a function of, of demand and more people wanting to, to live in, in Harrison Hot Springs or open businesses. When, when, when it comes to measured in respect to, to that factor and, and other factors as well, I, I, I don't think parking is too large of a component. That being said, it definitely is, would go into the, the, but long and, short, short answer, I'm not a hundred percent sure to be, to be honest with you.
And just a question now for the rest of the council. We're at seven hundred and fifty thousand, three quarter of a million visitors. How many do we, do we want? Because the more visitors we get in, the further we've got to extend any parking restrictions. Now, this will have an adverse effect on residents' quality of life. And also with the amount of developments we've got planned or coming up for planning, the amount of traffic coming down McCoon's and Eagle is liable to increase by over two hundred cars a day from taking shortcuts, along with construction vehicles. And a speed limit enforced with forty K is not the standard across the world. It's thirty K, twenty miles an hour. And to enforce that, we would need to install traffic calming. That's just a question for the rest of the council. Thank you.
Okay, I'll just quickly answer that regarding speed limits. I just threw that number out there and we don't, I don't think we need traffic calming. I think we've got to educate the public that safety comes first. In regards to the people coming in the village, if it gets over a situation where it's unsafe for the public, the RCMP will step in where they've done in other jurisdictions. If they find it's, with the amount of traffic, it's, it's unsafe for the public. The, the, this again, there's a lot of topics for discussion as we move along. I'm going to thank again Attila and Janice for your comments and thank you very much and we will move on. Thank you. Come on, councillor, I want to move forward here.
Just want to thank the consultant for a really good report. I know I've torn into it a bit, but it's workable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you again. You too. Appreciate it. Have a great weekend.
Thank you very much and enjoy your weekends as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yes, your worship, we do have a
Oh, sorry, I just made, we just moved the receipt, Mr. Allen. Thank you. Sorry about that. Next order of business, please.
Yes, your worship, we'll move on to the next item that we have on the agenda. And that is from the operations manager regarding permanent washrooms for Spring Park. Before we turn it over to Mr. Cook, I'd like to draw your attention to page sixty. Under option five, the paragraph should read Spring Park, not Rendall Park. That is in the body of the of the paragraph.
Cook? Thank you, your worship. The discussion is about the potential of installing a permanent washroom in Spring Park. At the regular meeting of December sixth, twenty twenty one, council received a request for consideration of the installation of a permanent washroom in Spring Park. Staff was directed to return with options for a permanent washroom for Spring Park, including consideration of Portland Loop for council to review before the final adoption of the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six financial plan bylaw. Following recommendation is that the January twelfth, twenty twenty two report regarding options for a permanent washroom in Spring Park be received.
So we have a recommendation here. Do we have a move and move by councillor Piper? Discussion councillor Piper.
Thank you, worship. And thank you to staff for the research that went into this particular topic. It always blows me away, the prices of these units. But it looks like our best and most economical choice is is what we currently have installed in Rendall Park. And just a point of clarification. Those ones in Rendall Park are not all season, right? We have to cut the water and make sure the lines don't freeze.
Mr. Cook?
That is correct. At the end of every season, we do, we do winterize the units.
That that's, thank you, staff. And that's another concern from residents that I speak with as well, who are very active in the community, is having those washroom facilities, especially early in the morning. You know, some of the people I've spoken to work and like to do their exercise at the crack of dawn. And so not having a spot for relief sometimes is understandably very uncomfortable. So just again, thanks for the research and gave me another check of reality of how prices are skyrocketing. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hooper.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I mean, the ones in Rendall Park, they're not really that attractive, are they? I mean, we're going to put something in in Spring Park where we've got a play area and the tennis courts and the rest of it. It wouldn't sound a little bit more upmarket than that. I'd like to see something that's got a cover on. And I know costs are going through the roof and that. But for the people that are playing tennis and that, when we suddenly get a quick downpour and that, somewhere from just a going shelter and that would be nice. Again, I'll come up with a problem with that is that having an open structure like that will attract some of the youth and other people of a night time to use it. But then we got bylaws to deal with that and the rest of it, so. Now, I'd like to see something that's going to suit not just the people that exercise or have got young children in Spring Park, but also the the older population that use the tennis courts and that. Just for a bit of shelter when they're waiting for the game to be out the sun and the rest of it. So, yeah, I think I'd like to go with the the more expensive one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Palmer.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I think it has to be year round. And I see Spring Park as only being used more and more because we have more and more development in the village. And so I think having year round washrooms are good. I agree, the ones in Rendall aren't that attractive. And I do, I and I've always been promoting for a while that there should be some canopyed structure. So that if a person wanted to have a kid's birthday party on a potentially rainy day or during COVID, people want to get together and play cards. If so, the two things could be matched together, that would be good. I have to say that the option two with the price of four sixty five seven seems like so much money. And I think, gee, I almost could build a house for that. But I'm slowly getting used to things in terms of the cost for municipal structures. But but I would, so I'm not sure that's exactly what I like. But I do like the concept of year round washrooms in an attractive building that has a canopy with it. And and I think, you know, councillor Hooper was referring to the tennis court. The tennis court's amazingly busy and there are people of different ages there. It's quite often to see young people in the late afternoon there. So there's there's quite a lot of people there. The playground attracts a lot of people. If there was a washroom, I think that park would attract more people. If there was a canopy, I think it would be good. Of course, you know, you see a canopy and you think, oh, what's going to go on at night? But I don't think, I'm really quite comfortable that that's not going to be a problem. I think I've kind of figured out that the number of times that I've noticed, and of course, our host backs on a spring, that there's been disruptions, it's been so uncommon. There are so many places that drunken louts can go to in our community. They can go to Hicks Lake, they can go up, they can go so many places that it's not like a lot of communities where you, that would be the, you know, a great drawing card for that kind of behavior. So I don't have any any reservations about about that. And I, you know, in that Spring Park seems to be the one park in the village that residents use primarily. I'm not saying there's never tourists in there, but it is kind of a resident park. I'd like to see us improve it. And this is, this is a way of doing it. But, you know, so, yeah, if it's possible to have a washroom and a canopy at the same time, that would meet two needs, but definitely year round washroom. And so the least expensive option doesn't attract me, even though I almost always pick the least expensive option for everything, which has caused my children to call me cheap, which is really cruel. So, yeah, I'm, I like option two, but option two is a little grand. I don't know that the roof has to be quite so impressive, but it it should be. There should be a canopy attached to the washroom. It would be a good, a good match. And of course, we've already agreed to put a water filling station, a bottle filling station. If that could be matched up to the same place, because that's where the water would be, that would be a really nice addition to to that park. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Vidal.
Thank you, your your worship. I agree that if we're going to put on an initial expense for a washroom, that we should include some kind of a, some kind of a canopy, not just for tennis players, but for families who may be in there enjoying the park or the playground or whatever and have a area to get out out of the sun or or out of the rain. I also did a big gulp once I saw the prices. But nonetheless, it's, it is what it is. I did some research on the Portland Lou, which is one of the options. And I believe it, Portland uses it a lot in their downtown area for, you know, on streets and whatever, for easy access for in the downtown area. But I don't particularly like the design of it. And I don't think it would be appropriate for for Spring Park. So, your worship, my choice is option two. And again, I agree with councillor Palmer that I don't think we would need the extent of such an elaborate canopy or rooftop area. But that's certainly if something council decides to go ahead with can be, you know, talked about and decided at a later time. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor. For my comments, the reason that the washrooms that are in Rendall Park now was at the time, it was nearly half a million dollars to build a brand new washroom in Rendall Park. So we came up with this design, but it's used somewhat used at Cascade Falls by the regional district. The difference is ours is connected to the waste sewer, which is a big difference. Also to the water for people to wash their hands. So that that's the big difference. Yeah, they are the best looking or no, but we were getting a lot of pressure for safety for the people crossing, especially on the busy weekends and the summer, crossing Rendall Park to go to the washrooms at the boat launch. So that was, that was one of the reasons for for doing that. There was some discussion many years ago of flipping the existing washroom onto Rendall Park. That didn't work. So the big costs came forward then to build a proper washroom. And it was just under half a million at that time. So my way of thinking is anything's better than a pot of potty. Because it ain't all right, it's, they have to be used at times and it serves. The trouble with pot of potties is unless you have an everyday cleaning contract, which is very expensive, it's, it's, you know, once they're, once they're overflowing, it's very unpleasant and unhygienic. I mean, if I had to go for, I mean, there's no, this is just here for receipt and discussion. I mean, it's not on in the budget for this year. I don't think there's any grants that you can get for washrooms. So whether sort of money would come from, I mean, you're looking at half a million dollars for what two councillors are proposing. I mean, if you had to go with with a cover structure, I would go with number four. That's half the price and you've got your cupboard structure and and the washroom as well. Now, open all year round, that would mean heating to go in there. Pentecton had this problem with their washrooms downtown. It became the big collection area for the for the unfortunate injection people. So they had to close those at a certain time at night so that that to try and stop that sort of activity. Spring Park in the winter, in the in the winter months, although we do have lights there, it's pretty secluded compared to the main washrooms on the beach. So there could be, there could be problems. I'm not sure whether we actually if you open it all year round, I mean, it doesn't have to be open till nine or ten o'clock at night. I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna bring time limits in, it should be probably at the same times as our existing washrooms. The summer hours and then the winter hours. If you want to have it remain open all year, like councillor Piper says, if people who go out for exercise early in the morning and they want, they want somewhere to to for a washroom. So it's, the heating costs would come into this. And of course, the the staff time to close, add that to the list of the other two that we take care of on the beach. And also, the washrooms are cleaned by our staff. They're not cleaned by janitorial company. So that would be added to their to their list of duties. So that's has to be taken into consideration. Yeah, I'm all year round. I have no problems with that. A covered structure would look would look nicer. But are we looking at some, are we, I mean, getting the letter from the from the lady who plays tennis to council in regards to, we would like something, you know, it sounded like pretty, pretty, pretty quick, you know. It's, I think it's going to happen this year. But I would agree, something needs to be done with Spring Park for a washroom. It's councillor Palmer's correct. It is our number one premier park for families and for recreation, not just the tennis players. You've got the pickleball players as well at the other end and children that or youth that use the basketball area as well in the lacrosse box. It's, it's a park that was constructed, I believe, because of the the spring ball we used to have here. A lot of money went into that park from that spring ball many moons ago. It's a beautiful park. We spent a lot of money on the tennis courts. We're resurfacing. They're well used. We're glad they are used. But the whole area has been improved with the the bridge, the Fred Hardy, the replacement of the Fred Hardy Bridge. So I I'm, sorry, if I had a choice, I would go with number four. But that's, I think, staff are just getting ideas from us to take forward to to their meetings and with the financial officer. But this is something here for receipt. It's not in our budget, as you know, for this year. And not that sort of money anyway. But if council has any more comments, councillor Palmer?
Just a simple question. It's like anything else. Of course, I I know what I like. I don't always know if I can afford it. I don't even know, always know if I have the money for it. So this issue would be a lot easier if I had a, I'm trying to remember. I was taking a fast look earlier if I could figure out how much money is in the applicable reserves for park improvements. And that would, that would help. Do we know how much money is in the reserves? I've got it. I didn't see it when I looked through it quickly. So it's the schedule of reserves. Yeah, I didn't see it on that basis, but that that would certainly be a question in terms of of whether the money is is available, because that's what I assume we would pay. I recognize that we're not likely to find a grant for this. It's not a RMI issue. It's not a tourism issue. This isn't the sort of thing the government, senior government seem to put out for grants. So I assume that it would have to come from park reserves.
Yeah, like I said, councillor, this from today's meeting, this can go back with those those ideas to the staff. And they could possibly come back to us with, if that park dedication is allowed to be used for for a washroom.
Yeah, and I'm not donating that. I'm not expecting a discussion, decision. But I'll, I just am saying, if I knew how much money was available for it, it would, it would inform which which option I like in terms of which one I would go with. But I would like to see it come back. I hate to see this not come back for a long time to try and fit into the budget. It would be, I'd like to see it come back and with the understanding of what is available, what could be used, then we can at least make a decision whether we want to prioritize doing it. Because if we're going to do it, it does make sense to do it, do it soon. If there's money, and if there's not money, I don't think, I don't think residents are going to be happy for us to pull four hundred and fifty thousand dollars by tax increase. So that that would be an important issue, but I would like to see it come back is my, is my point. But if I knew that amount, it would make it a lot easier. I mean, I know, again, I know what I like if I'm not thinking about the consequence of the cost. But I need to have an understanding of the consequence of the cost, whether it affects tax rates or whether the money is just sitting there. Thanks.
Think the corporate officer may have a comment, is it?
Yes, your worship, I was just, because the report is here for receipt, we would like further direction from council. Counselor Palmer is indicating, am I correct?
Which choice?
So we we need a mover, we've got a mover, we need to. Address the receipt of the report, and then if council has any further direction, then we would like something. We have that, sir.
Also, so, direction in regarding the options.
So what I heard was, you know, there was some decisions on the types of options that were available. But what I was hearing, and perhaps Mr. Cook can elaborate. I I was hearing additional information about maybe a different option. That includes a canopy of some sort.
I think. Getting the thoughts of. Thoughts of council, they're looking for a nice looking washroom with a with some sort of shelter. All year round use. And. I think that's what they they would be happy with. From what I picked up from council, Counselor Piper has a comment.
Thank you, your worship. I I think it would be wise of us if staff brought it back to provide pricing. Of standalone overhead structures. Personally, it kind of creeps me out to be sitting there playing a game of cards with friends and people walking in and out. And of, you know, relatively private. Moment of needing to use a washroom. So I I would prefer to see standalone shelters. I'm I'm not against. That going in Counselor Palmer's backyard park that he has good insight into. But I think maybe that would affect costs perhaps. And. And would create, I don't, I, I know Counselor Palmer was. Vocal about stating safety in that park, but. Just people standing around perhaps loitering. We don't know what the future holds for the community, right? And who comes in and out of our community as well. I would want it to be a safe environment. And also serve as a place of recreation and enjoyment for the residents. And having standalone covers or structures would allow for that in my mind.
Thank you. So without dwelling much longer on this, Mr. Cook. All through that. If you could come back at some point with the options. Whether it's a standalone with a separate canopy, shelter or. A unit with the shelter for all year round. Use of a washroom in Spring Park. And then you come back with the options, we will have another discussion. On that as well. I think that will cover it as far as what I've heard from council, separate, separate shelter. Or a combination of washroom and shelter. For the year round, so heating has to be considered. And of course, the times, whatever times that we do the other, the other washrooms. So is that helpful for you, Mr. Cook?
If that is council's desire, I'll be happy to present a few options.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Palmer.
So. I I'm not sure, but I, one of the ways forward, of course, we have a motion to. To receive the report. So I was thinking if we voted on receiving the report, then we could follow it up with a motion. A directing staff to come back with that as well as. A report as to possible funding that would pay for it.
Would, they would do that.
Yeah, well, I I was just saying, I'd put it right as well, so that we could know what our choices are of how we could, of how we could pay for it.
I think the the receive and what would be discussed is all they were asking for. We've given them direction on what we would like to see and how the, how it's gonna be funded. Okay, is that good enough, corporate officer?
That that is fine with me, yeah.
Oh, sorry, Jesus, this finger of mine is getting sore. On the receipt, all in favor. Thank you very much, past. Next order of business, please.
Yes, your worship, the next item that we have is from the Community Services Manager. This is regarding off-leash dog park.
Michelle.
Thank you, your worship. At the May 28th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting, council directed staff to conduct a public consultation process to gauge the level of public support for an off-leash dog park. At the regular council meeting of October 4th, 2021, council received the results from a survey. The public consultation process indicated a strong desire for an off-leash park within the village. Fire hall park being the most popular choice. When asked how much capital spending from taxation or dedicated reserves would be supported to develop an off-leash dog park, up to $75,000 was the most common choice. And up to $10,000 from taxation for ongoing maintenance costs. The village has collected park development cost charges that may be used for the acquisition or upgrades of new parks. In the financial officer's report yesterday, she indicated there was a balance of $548,008 in that DCC reserve. The eligible expenses for that are, to use that money include fencing, landscaping, drainage, and irrigation trails and restrooms. There's also additional. You know, for different parks, playgrounds, but that wouldn't apply to a dog park. Additional amenities could be procured with dedicated parkland reserves, and those reserves are at approximately $138,000 that can be used towards improvements. The following table indicates some common off-leash dog park amenities and the established costs for your review. The DCC eligible expenses include fencing, landscaping, trails, and some options would be irrigation and drainage and restrooms. And then the parkland reserve eligible expenses include access and parking, signage, sanitation, seating, lighting, water, fountain. Dog wash station and agility and interactive components. The financial, the cost required to create a modest off-leash dog park is estimated at approximately $175,000. Optional amenities could bring the costs up by an additional $390,000. The recommendation is that the off-leash dog park report of January 17th, 2022 be received. Thank you.
We have it here for receipt. Do we have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Vidal, and now we will. Start with discussion, Counselor Palmer. Phone, please.
The the report is is good, thank you. It, like everything else, the costs always totally surprised me. And I I think the fire hall park is the best location. This does seem to deal with. Setting it up properly. Again, I guess part of the question would be, I see, and and I appreciate the fact that you set out where the money would come from. So from. Development cost charges and reserves. Just is so much more money than I thought it would be. Personally, I don't like off-leash parks. And we have dogs, and we would never take them to off-leash parks, so I'm not a fan of off-leash parks. However. Having said that, it isn't about me, and I know that there is huge desire and demand in the village for an off-leash park. So I certainly am supportive of providing, creating an off-leash park. Because, you know, there's a lot of people with dogs and they are obviously not in position where they can just let their dogs run in their backyards as easily as we can. So I'm supportive. I'm just, I'm hoping that that's a, is a significant overestimation of costs. Because that's. That's, that's, that's a lot of money, but I do think that's the best location. And I I do think it's, you know, you certainly looked at fitting all of the requirements to make it a top. You know, meeting all the needs, so I think that's, I think that's good. So I'm reluctantly supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Piper.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you to staff for a great report, kind of. Drives home the reality of costs that that we're facing. It was, this is probably the second or third time that we've gone out as a municipality to our publics. In regards to dog parks or off-leash dog parks, so. It was interesting to see the the support for such. I I still am hesitant about neighbors in and around that area. I know that was the most popular choice. But with dog perks come talking dogs and that, if you aren't a dog owner. Could provide a level of annoyance as sound travels through this community. Quite well. I'm, I'm, I'm going to support it. I think we approach it as, you know, a bit of a pilot project and. Go as bare minimum skeleton as we can and still have it a functioning off-leash dog park. For the community. I think the pandemic, I mean, there's millions of stories about. People growing their family with pets. And dogs and that companionship and. And the benefit to mental health, having, having that extra companion or addition to one's family, so. They being dogs are part of our community as well. And I think having an area for them to socialize. Would be good. I'm I'm not naive to the issues that come with off-leash dog parks, dog to dog or owner to owner. It would. Would be. Another area for our staff to care for and take care of, which creates pause for me as well. That's why I would like it to go in as skeletal as possible, to see how it goes, measure usage. Have some kind of outlet for people to record or report issues. And also the the same portal to to suggest improvements as it grows slowly. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, counselor, Counselor Hooper.
Thank you. Yeah, I support this, but I'd like staff to actually go back and look. I'm unhappy with a four-foot fence. Adjacent to the schoolyard, the school area. I mean, children run about and they screech and they scream, which to a dog is the sound of a dying animal. That's why they put a squeaker in the dog toys. I'd hate to see any dog leap a four-foot fence, which they're quite capable of doing with no ease at all, and attack a child. Also, the children will also go up to the fence and start putting their hands through. Again, this is a health and safety reason. I do believe that Fraser Valley Regional District on their animal control. Part of their remit was that households should have a fence. Of at least six to eight feet to keep their dog in. So I'd like that to go further investigation on that. The other thing with dog parks, I used to take my dogs over to the dog park. But you do get, people will have to realize that once a dog's off-leash in a dog park. Dogs are dogs, they will fight. There's no liability to the council or anything. It is a guess between two dogs. Yes, the dogs need water, they need other bits and pieces. But it should also be said that the the people that use this must clear up after their dogs. And if the dogs start digging and tunneling and that round by the fences, it's up to the owner to go back and fill these holes in. Again. I'd like some of. Update and briefing on the location of this and the height and the type of fence. Put forward to Fraser Valley Regional District Animal Control. Just to clear us of any. Dimension, something untwists happen. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, your worship. I'm actually not in favor of. The location suggested, even though I understand why it would be the most popular one with easy access and. Not only for residents, for visitors, I'm. I'd be much more happy with a, you know, the location that was identified, which. Across from our. Community garden. I think. Even though it's more or further away from our downtown and commercial core. I think it's a safer, safer area. I like Counselor Hooper have concerns with it being beside the school. Not only for noise, for distraction to children who may be. Outside in a learning environment with their teacher and also for safety as. Counselor Hooper indicated, children are very curious and my concern is that they would. Move over to the fenced area between the school and. The park. Attempt to engage with with the dogs. Having said that, it does appear that. Behind the fire hall is is the most popular one and. Clearly, it looks like we're headed down that, down that path. Until we are aware of. The amount of usage that that park would. Would get either from residents or from visitors. And considering the expense, I agree that we should put in. The bare minimum at this time. And I. Come up with some mechanism or a person to to monitor its usage before we. Expanded and incorporated some of the bells, bells and whistles. I also would need to be satisfied regarding liability. If. You know. Heaven forbid that I have heard horror stories of dog owners getting into. Altercations and conflicts in dog parks and if. You know, dogs tend to dig in the ground and if. Person that was using or dog owner. Tripped and fell. And injured themselves, I would need to know if. The extent that the village would be held liable for that. I am. Very much so in in support of an off-leash dog park. It. Is something that our residents have. Been approaching and asking since I came on council and with our increased in population and. And newer homes and with with smaller lot areas and whatever. I think it is time to. Initiate this plan, so I am in favor of it, your worship, and thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Yeah, we've had, we've had several discussions over the years. I can recall when. Counselor turned it down, it was when it was $12,000. To create a small dog park. That was gonna be on the, on the beach. Not on the beach, near the canoe cove there, but. Not on the beach, near the canoe cove there, but there's certain areas here that. I mean, first of all, when I was on Vancouver Island, Fisherman's Wharf Park, off-leash area. That's on the way to the to the. What do you call it? The. The two, the boats, the. What do you call the big boats? No, the ones that people are traveling. No, the big. Cruise ships, the cruise ship area, there's Fisherman's Wharf Park, they're off-leash here, they they've got a they had a pilot project there. Theirs was from six thirty in the morning to nine in the morning, that was it. And it's pick up after your dog, ensure you have control, keep your dog from running towards or jumping on people. Prevent your dog from digging holes, let us know what you think. And that was a pilot project that they they put in place there. And it was set up right in the middle of a park, actually, to be perfectly honest. So that was, I just thought that was of some interest, that's why I took a photograph of the of the signage. Now. There is a very nice area behind the behind the fire hall there. That that could be used, it's quite a big area. I agree with councillor Hooper. Councillor Vidal brought it up as well about the the safety when the children are out of their recreation time. And also in the evenings, because that's used in the evenings by the local children for the play area as well after school. That if there wasn't a fence put up, it would have to be a separate fence from that school fence. Because that is a concern which which is a good point that was brought up there for the safety of the children. The, all the fancy stuff, I mean, I'm not in favor of, you know, it's. Thank you, by the way, staff for bringing such a comprehensive report forward, that's what we asked for and we really appreciate that. This is no reflection on them, but additional landscaping, forget it, dog wash station, forget it. Lighting, I don't think you need lighting after five o'clock in the winter, it gets dark, we'll go home. It's, I don't think the neighbors, once you're running around there at night, at seven or nine o'clock at night, if it's lit up, and that's what would happen. Access to the parking, again, I'm against that because the back area of the fire hall is used for practice. By the fire department, they have their burn, what do you call it, container there where they practice. And it's and also it's the it's it's the vehicles, when they're washed or being used, they back out into that area as well. It's a it's a two-way garage opening, so I would be against. Any type of parking from the residents, if you're walking your dog, you walk there. And I've heard from some residents who've said to me, yeah, we walk, we don't, we're not going to put the dogs in the car and take them to the. To the dog park area. My personal preference, as mentioned by. Why you've heard it all before from me, by councillor Vidal, is our one acre on on opposite Chestnut. On McCombs, which is a perfect area for dogs to run around. Obviously, again, has to be fenced, that's the expense really, is the fencing. It's a it's a pretty clear area, dogs love to jump and do all those sort of things, you know. But, yeah, I think, I mean. If I could ask Michelle, what was the overall. The overall. Survey that you did in regards to for and against. I'll catch you in a minute, Ray, don't worry, I won't forget you.
Out of the two hundred and twenty-one responses, eighty-seven percent were in favor. Yes, sir.
I know this is here for receipt again, we don't have, there is obviously the funding has been shown where it would come from. But it says, this is not in the budget for this year either. Yeah, I'm, I mean, I, my costing has brought it down to about sixty-five thousand dollars. I don't think you need five, if it did go there, five benches, two would be very, would be adequate in that area. You don't, you wouldn't need five, yeah, you need, obviously, the dog dispensers, and of course, again. This becomes another addition to our staff, our crew for cleanup. And if, so I'd be inclined to go the bare minimum and do a trial basis here. And see how this goes. And if it doesn't work out, then, you know, I mean, like councillor Piper says. All the areas that were chosen affect the residents and sound does travel because we're right in the middle. Of a mountain area, the dead center, you know, it's, it really does travel and. Again, depends on the time of the mornings, the dogs would go there, I mean, it's the Balsam is all retired people. On Balsam Avenue, virtually on both sides, I think, you know, so, and also the cul-de-sac. Clover at at the far end by the school. So, you know, if this, people start coming out at six or seven in the morning and you're, you know. I mean, you're retired, you don't want to be woken up with the sound of of dogs. I mean, I love dogs, don't get me wrong. An ongoing issue, people have taken the wrong attitude, unfortunately, how we've dealt with this. But this has been dealt with in previous committee of the whole, I've still got the minutes, that we had dealt with it. Rendell Park didn't work out. The other area suggested at Canoe Cove, council, we're not in favor of there. So I always went back to the one acre opposite Chestnut, which belongs to the village. And it's it's, I think, would be the the area and there's no actual parking on that side. Because we do have the new gravel trail there, but you could park, if you had to park on Chestnut or. Or the west or the west side of of McCombs there. So that that is my thoughts on this. I'm not sure how we're going to direct, I'll get some advice in a minute from our staff, I'll let councillor Hoover jump in here.
Thank you. The other thing there has to be notices put up, that people are liable to get hit by dogs. I've seen people with their legs broken by dogs, a seventy-pound dog running around at thirty miles an hour straight into someone. Children must also be supervised, they can't be allowed to wander around the large dog area, because they get knocked over left, right and center. All the little extras that are at on this, like the benches and that, they can all be added at a later date, should the park be successful. But want to know the, what opening hours will we be considering for this?
Sure, whether staff had any any ideas on that, Michelle?
It would be consistent with the parks by law that we have now, which is. I'll have to ask the corporate officer to clarify what the hours are.
So under the park regulation by law, what the hours are, there's no specific hours. Aside from the curfew hours that I'm aware of for the beachfront. I'm not aware of that, your worship, I'd have to check back.
Palmer? Going to say, my recollection is that the parks by law actually does have specific hours, because I remember being concerned about them. So I I think it's like six to eleven or something like that, but I really.
It's clearly budding in the council, that's the the beach area.
Only that one?
That's in there, the curfew's eleven o'clock. It may extend to the other parks, I'm not sure, again, we'd have to look at that, but.
I, yeah, because there's also limitation about bicycles, et cetera, and I, when we went through that, I was being quite clear in my mind that that also applied to Spring Park. So I think it would apply, but more to the point, the hours maybe need to be limited here. Is, you know, maybe we go from seven till five at night or something like that, I, you know, there's no reason late at night. And I don't, I don't want to see disruption to the residents in the area. And and I do think minimizing the startup is a good idea in terms of, you know, we can always put a lot of the improvements in later if necessary. But just getting it going and seeing if it if it if it works. I do see parking as an issue, I'm just going to go back to that, if it were down on McCombs, which initially I used to think was a good idea, because I thought it would disturb less people. It's far enough, I mean, when I think about the people who will use it, they're going to be throughout the village, but I think the largest group that use it will be people who live in the high-density. Units along the front, the apartments, where that's their dogs need to have a chance to run, as opposed to people who have a backyard. So if we want them to walk to it and not have to park somewhere, that's close enough to do that. Where a lot of the apartments, whereas McCombs is far enough down that it's reasonable to expect, because a lot of the people are with dogs are older too. I think it's going to, then there better be adequate parking down there for people to be able to access it. So, you know, I've slowly come to the conclusion that the fire hall park is the best choice, but it certainly wasn't my initial choice. Initially, I thought McCombs was the least disruptive, but I just see a parking problem there. Anyway, so, yeah, I I think we, is it possible to have something come back to us with a tighter budget in terms of the must-dos? To kind of get rid of anything optional at this point that we could approve? And is it possible, then, maybe even the hours would do it, and then if it's possible, I'd like to have it come back to us. And I like to approve it and figure out a way to put it in this year's budget and get it going. We're going to do it, let's. Let's let's do it, because we have taken quite a while from some of the earlier requests. That's, that would be my my hope.
This is again here for receipt and also to give directions to staff on what we what council thinks should go. I think if, I think the trial and the basics would be a good way to start on there. If if it is going to be the Fire Hall Park, from that perspective, whether you want costs to come back to you. In regards to Balsam, see the distance from Espinard to Balsam. And the distance from Espinard to the Fire Hall is pretty much the same. Distance-wise, so that for walking, you know what I mean, I don't think there's a lot of difference there in that, and we know who drive McCombs. And councillor Piper lives down that way, that a lot of people use McCombs for walking their dogs. It's a very heavily used area, more so now even with the new footpath that they, because now the dogs have got a place. To relieve themselves if they want to, and they can still walk comfortably on a on a gravel footpath. So that's that's going to be more and more used, that area, that's why I've always leaned towards that that one acre. I'm just going to ask the corporate officer, because she's more up on this than I am. I know that the acre is on the village's village's map there. But how does this fall in place with the provincial, is it, do we don't have to go through any provincial permission or any of that business, do we?
You're speaking about the parcel off of McCombs. And that I would have to, let me just think. Yeah, I'll have, I would have to get back to you about that, I I don't want to speak out of turn.
So is it possible, I'll show this out to staff, you're possibly, you've got some info on a low, low, low. Low-based trial period for for Fire Hall Park, if that's what you want to call that area. And also options for Chestnut, the the one acre off of McCombs. And then give council an option for that with cost, because to me, even the McCombs one, is fencing is the important thing, obviously. You know, I'm not sure, what do you need any, there's going to be benches already on the pathways along there, so what do you need benches, I don't know, but. By having a, having a. And a course where dogs can enjoy themselves and do a bit of jumping, they enjoy all that. It's just a matter is, the one thing we haven't discussed, which is in a lot of, in some areas, is a separation. Which I've seen on some comments of small dogs and big dogs, so that's, I see that's not there. So is that a, is that, was that a consideration in your report, Michelle?
Yes, and under the fencing section, there was additional costs added in for segregated area to minimize the interaction between small and large dogs.
But thank you, councillor Vidal, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you for bringing up the small dog, big dog separation, your worship, it was on my mind also. But in a. Report coming back to, from staff to council, I, to to ease my mind. May we also include a breakdown on any liability issues that may be for the village? Thank you.
Be taken care of by the staff and obviously our corporate office is involved with that, so that's here on the liability situation. Any else you need, Rhonda?
If council wished this project to move forward this year, we would need an amount for the financial officer to include in the financial plan by law. If you would like another report to come back, I need a motion for that and we'd work on that next.
I would suggest, and council can jump in if they wish, I would suggest that you bring us back another report with the bare essentials. We don't, you know, you've heard what we can cut out of there and what we don't need, this is a, I'm still going to emphasize, we should try this as a pilot project. I like the idea I saw in Victoria, pilot project, because again, we will get feedback from the local residents here as well. On how this is working as well, so pilot project for, I don't know, maybe six months or whatever, or whatever the case may be. And give us the options on the on the Balsam one as well.
I was just going to suggest that if council could choose a location that would help narrow down the costs.
Okay, so I'll go, so what is your preference, councillors, regarding Fire Hall Park? Or looking at the options of the of the 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 Balsam one acre area?
My apologies, with the earlier survey, we did ask people their their preferences, and I know it was Fire Hall. Do you remember what the what the weighting was of the preferences?
Yes, so out of the all the responses, forty percent preferred the Fire Hall Park. Twenty percent chose McCombs Drive adjacent to Chestnut Avenue, and then twelve percent looked at the parkland south of the water treatment plant.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I I I'm inclined to go with the Fire Hall. Simply because we've gone out and asked people their opinions, I don't want to ask people their opinions and then say, well, we're not going to do it anyway. So I can see arguments both ways, there's no question, my preference was McCombs. But in view of the community feedback, I'm, I I prefer to go proceed on with the Fire Hall Park. Thank you.
Councillor Piper?
Thank you, your worship. The people have spoken, and we asked them to speak, and they indicated the Fire Hall Park. So that's where I'm checking my box.
Thank you. Councillor Hooper?
Yes, we took the survey to the people and they want the fire hall, so that is it, thank you.
Councillor Vidal, you'll be the.
Thank you, your worship, I very much appreciate our residents putting in their their input. And certainly understand why their preference would be the Fire Hall. However, for my concerns that I have expressed regarding safety and among others. I, my choice would be McCombs and and Chestnut, thank you.
Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, as councillors have said, that. One thing we've shown the last three. One thing we've shown the last three years is transparency and involving the public in a lot of. Lot of decisions, and I'm going to agree with the public on this, although I say. My preference would have been, as always has been, McCombs, but. Our public have spoken and they prefer the Fire Hall Park in regards to that, just one quick one, Ron. Feedback from the fire department at all in regards to that?
No, we haven't reached out to them, this location was previously also before council, and I believe. They had provided feedback at that time.
Okay, thank you, okay, so now we'll go on the. For the direction for council. You want a motion on what location, it's Fire Hall Park or in favour? Okay, and opposed, opposed councillor Vidal, motion passes. So there we go, anything else?
Yeah, we just, can you call the question on receipt of the report, please?
See to the report, all in favour? Posed anybody? No, motion passes, thank you.
Rhonda, do you have enough enough direction, would you like a motion?
If council can make a motion to direct staff to come back with a report. With the pricing for a basic dog park at Fire Hall Park and. Further information on liability and safety, that'd be appreciated.
Moved by councillor Palmer, I think you had your hand up?
Pardon me? Oh, and proposed operating hours, thank you.
Okay, folks, no discussion on that, I'll call the question, we've given direction to staff to come back, all in favour? Posed anybody? No, okay, motion passes.
Okay, your worship, yes?
Thank you all for taking the time, it's been a long, a long haul here, but we had a lot to deal with. And for whatever you've heard. That a lot of the stuff that we've discussed in the last two days, some of you will recall, that this has come up. At council meetings, and this has been forwarded to staff to come back with reports to us. And that's why we have the committee of the whole. So really going to appreciate your time, and a motion to adjourn moved by councillor Palmer, sorry, I'll give it a councillor pipe at this time. You're out, Palmer. Thank you, all in favour, thank you very much, take care, have a nice weekend.